Good evening, welcome to the in-person edition of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee. This meeting is being recorded because there are no people in the audience tonight. This will allow the public to view it at home and many times throughout the week as there's not a lot of programming on the educational channel yet. Let's see, it's being recorded, everybody's here. All right, so-
Mahala asked for the link. She said she doesn't have the link.
There is no link, we're live. So she can watch it on HW Cam.
HW Cam dot org to the live.
Yep, if you go to the YouTube channel, live.
No, it's not on YouTube tonight.
Oh, it's not on YouTube tonight?
HW Cam dot org, live, live feed.
Okay.
HWcam.org, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yep, go to the live feed. Great, so, when last we met in person, we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and so we will do that tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, super. So tonight, we have with us Dorothy Presser from the MASC and Chris McGrath, who is a former superintendent, and I believe, were you Mr. Harvey's mentor?
It was Michael Harvey's coach, yes.
Yep.
I had two years in this very room.
Exactly, and so she was also Mike Harvey's mentor when he was here. So we're glad to have both of them with us. So our agenda tonight is going to be led by Dorothy for the norms, protocols, and procedures for effective school committees. Hopefully that will answer some questions for us. Then Mary Beth, well, Mary Beth Banyos, our superintendent, will give her initial entry plan information. We will talk about what we're going to do for the year, so our work plan. And then, the MASC is still having their conference, but it looks like it's going to be virtual. So there are some resolutions, so we need to vote tonight for a delegate to do that. And we'll vote on the schedule. We're technically supposed to do that in June, but at the beginning of June, we were not really even sure what was happening. So we voted a schedule through the end of the year, but we need to complete that, so. All right, Dorothy.
All right, well, it's nice to, oops, it's nice to see everybody live and in person. Happy to be with you again. A couple of things, Mary Beth, I, and Chris are sharing this microphone, so if you see us forget, feel free to remind us to be passing it back and forth as we're talking. And before I get started, I just want to address one thing. I know that you got an email this afternoon telling you that Chris would be here, and I believe there was some objection to the fact that it came so late. I want to take full responsibility for the fact that it came forwarded from Mary Beth and that it came late. I asked Mary Beth to forward it because it was just easier for me to send it to her and have her forwarded to everyone rather than me having to try and find everybody's email address. And the fact that Chris was joining us at the last minute, given that I felt like I needed a little bit more energy tonight, maybe, given my situation. So, that, I, you know, full responsibility on my end, 100% for the fact that that email came late this afternoon and it was forwarded. So, a couple of things we want to talk about tonight. I gave you, just as you were, as we were getting started, the eight characteristics of effective school boards. I decided not to do my usual PowerPoint tonight, in part because you've all seen it. I think that you have a good grasp of the roles and responsibilities of the school committee. And I think that sometimes, what happens is it gets a little harder when the rubber hits the road and you're actually trying to do the work, but I think you've got a good grasp of actually what those roles and responsibilities are. So I just wanted to kind of go through those eight characteristics and talk a little bit about, and maybe have Chris jump in a little bit too, about how they play out when you're actually doing the work. And I think, when I look through the eight characteristics and I think about what I know about this committee, there's a lot that you exhibit, and there's some that you need to work on. And I, if I sort of divide them up into the way, think about them, the ones that are the big philosophical pictures, about wanting kids to succeed, believing they should succeed, having, wanting, and expecting high achievement in the district, are the ones, I don't think there's any issue here with that. I don't think you make excuses for kids not succeeding, I think you're looking for it. But when the rubber hits the road and you're operationalizing some of those things, I think it gets a little bit harder. Not unique, but I think that's the situation you're in right now. Not used to talking through masks all the time. So, effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction and define clear goals toward that vision. I think you absolutely have those high expectations. You know, I've worked for several years with this committee, even though the makeup has changed, and I don't think that that has ever been in question. Right now, I think you would all agree, I think you're all looking for and have been looking for, that what are our common goals? What do we need to come together, figure out what the priorities are in this district to move us forward, find those common goals, and concentrate on that work? I think when, when one of Chris's fellow coaches has a line, which she says isn't really his, that if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there, right? So, when you're sort of meandering around at whatever's the priority of the day, rather than knowing, having a good direction of where to go, and how, and then talking about how do we get there, and how do we monitor that progress? So I think that if, some of the discussion tonight is, what do we see in front of us right now as goals we really need to be working on? And I think that'll get you a long way toward that. Effective school boards have strong shared beliefs and values about what's possible for students and their ability to learn, and of the system and its ability to teach all children at high levels. Again, that's sort of a philosophical one that I think is actually in place. Effective school boards are accountability-driven, spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policy to improve student achievement. To me, that's one of those more operational ones where some work could happen. To be more clear on defining what are the policy governance issues that we need to be focused on, and what are we leaving to the administration and monitoring the progress of the administration towards carrying out those operational issues. Effective school boards have a collaborative relationship with staff and the community, and establish a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders in setting and achieving district goals. So, obviously, need to work on the district goals part, sounds like there might need to be a little work on the communication structure too, to the point where people feel satisfied with it. But then, you know, just thinking about my work with you on the superintendent search, I remember, you know, adding that question at the end of the survey about, you know, where do we want to be headed as a district? I mean, you're clearly looking for that community input on goals, but at this point, and I think we'll be talking about it a little more tonight, you don't have that structure and pathway in place to actually determine what those goals are. That make sense?
Uh huh.
Before I turn the page, maybe I should ask Chris if she wants to step in.
I would just offer a comment on number one and four, particularly as it applies to the history of your work as a committee. I often, in working with new superintendents and working with members of our association, cite the most exquisite goal of goal-setting that I ever saw conducted by a committee. The Hamilton Wenham School Committee, this goes back about six years ago, came into their meeting and articulated their goals for the district. That was followed by the superintendent articulating his goals, and then each one of the building principals articulating the goals as outlined on their school improvement plan. And they were able to talk about the inherent value of having a through-line, where teachers in setting their goals knew what the goals of the committee were. The So, when Dorothy says, "You understand and you're a high level, have high expectations," that certainly has been my experience as well.
Thanks, Chris. So, moving along. Effective school boards are data-savvy, they embrace and monitor data even when information is negative and use it to drive continuous improvement. I certainly believe that you guys are looking at data. And I think that, you know, often when we talk to school committees about this, we're talking about making sure you're looking in a deep way at the right data, and not just, you know, look at every piece of data that comes across your desk at a very superficial level, but what is the, what is the data to be monitoring to make sure you're making progress on those goals that you've set? I think a lot of that will come out as you start to articulate and put in place those goals, that along with that, you'll be able to determine what is the data we're going to be needing to look at to ensure that we accomplish those goals. Effective school boards align and sustain resources such as professional development to meet district goals. I won't go on and read the rest of it, it's about budget, right? The budget is the most important resource you have to reach those goals. I often talk to school committees about saying, it's, sometimes it's easier in that budget process to have those well-defined goals, because that's the resource you have, right? So it gives you a better way to tell your story to the community in asking about those, asking for those resources, because you can tell them how they're going to be used, and you can tell them how they have been used, and, you know, show the progress that you've made. So, some of that, everybody, I think, is going to be in for a very interesting fiscal '22. So, being able to have that, you know, do that work now as you're starting to think about budget, because budget season is right upon us, being able to have that plan and those goals as you're moving forward into your budget process, I think is going to be critically important to be able to move forward. Effective school boards lead as a united team with the superintendent, each from their respective roles, with strong collaboration and mutual trust. I think hopefully, that's a little bit of what we'll be working on tonight, because I think that's an area where there's some work to be done. Effective school boards take part in team development and training, sometimes with their superintendents. In my view, often, hopefully, always maybe, with their superintendents, to build shared knowledge, values, and commitments for their improvement. So, that's why you're here, and I think Mary Beth has some plans and hopes that this will continue throughout the year to build that, to build that, that team and that knowledge together. So before I go on and talk a little bit more specifically, anybody have any comments that they want to make? I guess I don't have to run around with the microphone, because you all have them, so. Michelle?
I guess just advice on how we set these goals and move forward in the midst of inferno that we're experiencing right now.
That, you know, I, you know, sometimes I think about, and Chris, I'm sure will jump in on this too, but, so, we've got this unique, unique circumstance that we have to deal with now, but can't forget about the fact that there's this ongoing stuff too. So I think there has to be some sort of look at, what are the shorter-term things? I'm not sure I'm going to say it the best way, but there are things important to address now that affect now, but will also affect into the future. And to begin with, I think that's what you need to look at, and then, some of that will segue into what needs to be the ongoing things into the future. We used to talk about strategic planning in a different way than it's talked about now, where you'd have your five-year plan with very discreet steps, year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, and there was no deviation, right? This is what we were going to do. Strategic planning is now a much more flexible process, where year one is pretty well-defined, and then at the end of year one, you're saying, okay, what did we accomplish? Where do we, where do we stand? What might we need to adjust to continue us to get to where we wanted to be in year three or year five, however long you go out? But not just lockstep, so that allows that ability to be flexible to changing circumstances. Does that make sense?
Uh huh, thank you.
Yep. Peter?
Hi, Ms. Presser. Number four, it says, "Effective school boards have a collaborative relationship with staff and community." I'm more concerned about the staff part. What does that look like? Because I've always found that there was a buffer between the school committee and the staff, and we never got an unvarnished view of what teachers or staff were thinking or... So what would that look like, I guess?
I think, you know, in a lot of districts, I think that it's looked at in many ways as what's the relationship between the union and the school committee? And, and what are the pathways where that, that relationship happens? You know, when you're at the bargaining table or you're working, if there's a good relationship, you'll see fewer grievances, you'll see, and there is, I don't know if it's a buffer, but there, I mean, the superintendent is in there, right, as part of that. And I think I may, if Chris doesn't mind, throw a little bit of that to her, to what it looks like, because she's been in the trenches with it.
Thank you.
I was superintendent in Tewksbury for 19 years, and I always saw myself as being the bridge between the school committee and articulating the follow-up actions from certain school committee meetings through my leadership team to the staff, and, again, hearing from my leadership team and bringing their concerns to the school committee.
Right, but there's a filter there.
Say it again.
There's a filter there. There's a filter in what, you're, the superintendent, I'm not saying you or Ms. Superintendent Banyos, but there's a filter there, or that their interpretation is what reaches the school committee and vice versa, right?
There's a fourth component, and shame on me for not mentioning that. That's what the five members of my school committee were hearing out in the community.
You're right, because sometimes I hear different, I, I hear conflicting or different or diverging information.
And they would bring that to my attention.
Yeah.
I would, in the ideal, hopefully respond, if I didn't have the answer. If it was a question about a particular school, a question about special education, a question about budget, I might have to say, "I'll get back to you."
So, you're saying this is always going to look, there's always going to be a go-between, between the school committee and teachers, or then the staff? There's always a go-between.
That's right. You have a tremendous advantage, however, because I suspect, and Mary Beth will talk about this tonight, that in the conduct of an entry-plan process, you'll be out meeting with all of your constituents, and then what you begin to look for are patterns and trends as to what's on people's mind.
I see.
I can tell you what's on the minds of every superintendent I'm working with right now is to have a, a remote learning platform that's, that's more rigorous. We didn't quite get it right last-
I've been, I've been, I asked Dr. Harvey for that three years ago. I, when this first started, I asked the, the current superintendent for that, I was saying, "We need a robust learning management system. It would solve many of our problems," and I've just been poo-pooed for, for, for years and months now.
We are.
And I'm frustrated that we, that's what we should be doing, is having a remote learning management system that would solve many of our problems, and it would work in-person, hybrid, or remote. And it's actually the same system they'll be, our students will be using when they get to university and college, so it's seamless. And we don't have to do anything but, the, you know, they, they work with our publishers, the 24 hours a day, seven days a week support, it's just, anyway. So thank you for validating my point that we should have a, we should, we should have a focus on learning management system.
So, can I back off though? Because I think there's a difference, and maybe you'll find out, superintendents and school committees don't always agree on everything.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Because I think that there's, there's a difference between, you know, to me, a learning platform might be more of an operational issue. What's the policy or what's the goal? Is, is that the goal, or is there a bigger goal that the learning platform is the implementation of that goal? Do, do, is that, does that make sense? Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we were to articulate that, you would say, a school committee might come up with the goal of being, to being sure that we meet the needs of, to educate all of our students, whether they're in the building or not, or out of the building. So that could be the goal. But then, how to do that would fall more with, like, the superintendent and the leadership team? And if it involved money, they would bring that information to us in order to have it budgeted, or approved, or transferred, or whatever?
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I think that, I mean, that's, that's a very, I mean, when we talk about goals being a little more specific, and what are the, you know, what are the outcomes, there would certainly be more meat to that. That would help define the outcomes that you're talking about, right? That it be seamless, that they be prepared to go on to, you know, whatever it is prepares them for whatever they are facing at the next step. I mean, all those things would be part of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Okay. Any, any, before I go on, any, any other comments? Yes, no?
So, when Dr. Kukunberger was here, we were doing these surveys, and I sent you the results from that little survey thing. Is, are these the same characteristics that we were rating ourselves on then, or are these are different?
No, you were rating yourselves on your own operating protocols, I think. That's what you sent me, right?
Well, whatever the headers were, I felt like she had gotten that from somewhere, so, but, okay.
Yeah, they were, I was matching them up today to the operating protocols I found on the web.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, the research says this is what makes an effective school committee with a high impact on student achievement, right? But why is that important? And some of the reasons, and some of the reasons I think we're here tonight, is because what happens here at the committee table has an effect down into the classroom, right? The teachers are really important, you know, that teacher-student connection is obviously important, but what's going on at the board table has that effect in the classroom. That, setting that vision for students, making sure that vision is in place, and concentrating the school committee's efforts where it can be concentrated, to have that impact is important. So it does have an impact down into the classroom. When the committee is operating at a high level, and these things are in place, you've got more trust of the community, and you've got more support for the things you want to do for your kids, right, when that's in place. You've got staff members that feel more settled, they understand where the district is going, they understand that what their work is and what they need to accomplish in their work, what their contribution to the goals of the district is. And when there's a lot of conflict, you're not making any progress, because everybody's energy is focused on that conflict. So you want to be able to have these in place and be that high-performing committee to do what you're here to do, right, which is, which is serve your students and your community. And right now, you know, what did, what did you call where we are right now? An inferno?
Yes, inferno.
Right now, I think it's, it's, for any committee, at any district, it's really critical that that, that partnership and that with the superintendent and with, among the committee be in place, because there's just so, it, inferno's not a bad word, you know, emotions are high, people are stressed, we need to be able to find that path to get kids learning and answer the concerns of parents and kids and teachers as smoothly and effectively as we can. Make sense to everybody? So what I wanted to do tonight was, was my, my main part of the meeting before I turn it over to Mary Beth, was to have somewhat of a discussion of, how can you make your meetings smoother, more effective, more efficient, and get past some of what I see and hear about in having meetings that, that are not what I believe any of you want, right? So what I want to have you do is, I'm going to use my, my infamous yellow stickies, those of you who have been around with me for a while, not Dana and Anna, because they, we haven't been live, but everyone else will be aware of the yellow stickies. Just take a couple minutes and think about, what are two things that need to change to get you where you want to be? Not how to change, but what two changes do you see that need to be made to get you where you want to be? I think if we can, that red table over there, we can just put your stickies on that red table? Does that, you think that'll take the stickies? Okay. And then, once you've, once you've put them all up, one at a time, socially-distanced, I'll go over and read them, and we can see where, where's the, where's the consensus? What can we work on, and what can we talk about? Does that make sense?
So it's, it's two things that you, we'd like to change in regard to overall committee operations?
Yes, yes. Yep. I just, I just want, I mean, I know many of you might be able to list more than two, but let's, let's keep it to the two most important and see where that brings us. Okay?
Yeah, that's on the sticky. You're not going to do it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
It's like, school committee, school.
On the wires.
Have you give us more than two, then we get more than two choices.
That was general. So can I ask you?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Ooh, let me grab one for myself.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh. Thank you.
Hi. You think I'm wrong? I would love to. I'm like you do. Come to all that workshop, so if I can just sit here and let you do all the work. Someone in our office got married last month, too. Um, I'm not sure, it went from like 150, I think, in the backyard, it was. His comment was, didn't really mind not spending $500 on flowers. So. Hi. I literally got your text at 6:00, 10, 6:10.
Oh, I see, well, I sent it to you at five ten today.
Okay, first one is clear, shared goals, who we are and what we are trying to accomplish. Trust, the superintendent to the committee, the committee to the committee, the committee, the public, and the superintendent. Develop trust between the school committee and Mary Beth. Be responsive, yet follow protocols. Hold the big picture in mind as we work. Assumption of positive intent from all parties. Flexibility, open-mindedness, your way is not the only way. It may be the door to the best way. Equal voice, equal weight poll, equal responsibility, equity.
Mary Beth, did you read equal voice, equal weight poll?
That's what it says. Yep. Are you reading it the same ways?
Yeah, equal voice, equal weight poll, and weight is W-E-I-G-H-T, equal responsibility.
I love schools. Decisions seem to be made behind the scenes and the school committee is expected to get on board with the decisions. Okay. Total and consistent transparency regarding information and both internal and external communications. Recognize and respect the equal validity of individual member perspectives. And the views of the minority on the school committee are dismissed.
That's it. We need one, do we have one on open mind, well, I think transparency of communication? So you have the clear, shared goals, two around trust, responsive, yet follow protocols, big picture in mind as we work, positive intent, open-mindedness, and that probably could go with positive intent. Respect the equal validity of individual members, equity with equal voice possibly could go together. And then, these three discussions seem to be behind closed doors, so there's openness of communication. The issue of transparency comes up across both of those. And views of the minority school committee are dismissed. That could be transparency. It could also be all voices need to be heard.
So, why don't you guys provide some feedback about what you hear?
I think we sound like a committee that doesn't trust each other, trust the super. Trust seems like a very fleeting goal. I think we recognize we all need to have it, but I don't think we feel it. We don't sound like people who trust each other.
Anybody else?
I almost feel that we're reactive, as opposed to having it be thoughtful. And again, it could be the situation we're in right now, but just definitely more reactive than thoughtful.
So, if you think of some of the other, trust was mentioned, right? Are there some of the other ones that were mentioned, like equality or communication or something that would help drive that trust? I mean, how, how does the trust get developed? How would people see the trust being developed among members and with the superintendent?
I actually think that there was really nothing on that list that surprised me at all. I could probably name who wrote what. And I, I think a big part of sort of the trust is a communication and, you know, what is deemed as proper communication, especially in these times, and appropriate communication. And I think that's where, you know, this is my fifth year on the board. I've been through five of these at this point. And, you know, I've seen the wedge getting larger over the years, instead of smaller, so. But I really think it really comes down to communication and just that flexibility of thinking in everybody siloing themselves as opposed to sort of being open to outside ideas and influences.
So you, but-
And realizing that, you know, someone might be hearing something else or needing to hear something else, and not getting that communication that they need.
So, there was a lot in there, David?
I've been at this for a long time.
Yeah, no, no, and you know what? And if you're on the board for six, seven, eight, and nine, I hope you're at a workshop like this and you're six, seven, eight, and nine. So, you used two words on communication. One was appropriateness and the other was, you don't remember, do you?
I used a lot of words.
Communication that, what-
Maybe timeliness, because I really think that a, a big thing going on right now is how unique of a situation we're in as a committee. We're not unique in that every other school committee's going through the same thing, but we're unique in that even the people that have been on this board for years now have never gone through this before. So our communication problems that we had last year are very much different than our communication problems this year, because we're dealing with much different circumstances. The ask from the public this year is exponentially greater than it has ever been before. So, you know, even right now, there's probably, you know, a hundred people watching a workshop. We used to have these workshops in the superintendent's office, you know? And, you know, before this, in the four years, you know, before, you know, COVID hit, two dozen tops was the biggest that ever turned out, and that was for sports fees, you know? And, and, you know, we're looking at a couple hundred people, you know, really seeking clarity this past six, eight months. And they need, everybody needs very specific messaging, you know? The new kindergarten parent needs something very different than the senior parent who's trying to get their child ready for, you know, preparing for college. And the demands on the public for us as a committee individually isn't, is something that we're, not necessarily not used to, but we feel obligated in our own individuality to get those questions answered for them. And when we try and sort of bring it up the ladder, there's a lack of communication about where that need is and why that need is. And I think at the same time, you know, in all fairness, the leadership team has, is trying to deal with this the best they can and has their own messaging they're trying to put out, in a timeline that they have in mind, that there's a, just a large disconnect. So that's, that's what I mean about like that timeliness of the communication.
So, you're, I, what I hear you saying, tell me if I got it-
I don't know why this is all turning on me.
No, no, because I'm, believe me, I'm gonna move on, is that sort of the demand for information is exceeding the supply.
Yes, I would say definitely.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, again, I'm sure you're not unique.
Right.
But that doesn't make it feel any different-
Right.
-for anybody, for parents or for community or for teachers or principals or office or school committee members. But, so, does that, so you said that some of your communication issues, because we're in this situation now, are the communication issues might be different than last year. Is that part of the appropriateness of the communication?
Well, if we had small communication issues last year-
Yeah.
-we've poured gasoline on that fire.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I've picked on David. He's, he's done. He's, he wants me to not pick on him anymore, I think. And who else has something to say about this? Dana?
I don't, am I supposed to push this?
No, it's automatic, yeah. When it's green, it's, it's live.
I guess as a new member and who came in while everything was already on fire, so I haven't, you know, it has felt like being in an inferno, appropriately so. But I guess I'm wondering, the one, I, I had three and I didn't put it up there, but I, I, and maybe the, some of this is around communication, which is why I'm trying to bring up, is the, the spirit of the potential for collaboration, or collaborative, I don't want to say problem solving, because I don't like, but collaborative creation, I guess, of, of-
I feel like we really have the potential for that. I really do. Like, I think that this group, all of us, really together have the pow, like a powerful potential for creative collaboration. And then maybe to take sort of both Michelle and David's points, that like, the crazy inferno of a situation and sort of the different demands on communication have made it sort of feel like, it does feel, like, I keep thinking, when we have time for that, it's really gonna be beautiful, like, I real, so.
Yeah, well, so a couple, this may or may not be relevant comments, but, so, you know, I've been doing work with school committees around developing protocols and these type of workshops for quite a while. When I first started, I used to go in and say, ah, I got them to develop some norms. They are gonna be off and running. And then I realized, no, that was step one. Step two was they really needed to have that good conversation about goals. I'm gonna get back to communication, but just sort of to respond to Dana. They really need to have that conversation about goals so that they're working to get, you know, they've got a, a common set of things they're working on, right? So I think that's an important part of what needs to happen. I think that gets to your, that, that common creativity, or forget the word you used.
Yeah, I just feel like we, I feel really like we have a underlying potential, this group, to be a creative, collaborative body. I really do, and I'm sort of, and maybe, maybe the, maybe communication is getting in our way of doing that, maybe? I'm not sure. But I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, well, and, you know, and I think sometimes, and kind of gets to the point of where you are now and, you know, do we have time to do the work? Did you ever have some task that you had to do repeatedly and you knew there was a more efficient way to do it, but you kept thinking, I don't have time to switch to the more efficient way, so I'm gonna keep doing it the inefficient way? Until you finally put in the time to do it the efficient way and then everything got better after that? So that, that's kind of where we are, I think, in some ways, and again, not alone, right? But I think in some ways, that's kind of where we are. But, anyone else on communication? What, yes?
Well, I think, I think something that has occurred to me as we've gotten to know each other better, and I say this also as the other new member of the board, and yet, I think to some degree, some of our challenges are almost a byproduct of the fact that we're all very strong, interesting people in some ways, but we're different. And so I think sometimes, I think it's, I want to pick up on what Dana said. I also feel this group could do amazing things. And I think part of the reason we could do amazing things is we are different. We don't all have the same background, we don't all have the same perspective. Our kids are at very different ages in the district. We're not all from the same places. I think actually, and I've seen this in a lot of groups that I facilitated over the years that have very difficult conversations, is sometimes the very diversity of thought that makes you strong can also make you challenged, because we will disagree. I've always thought that was a strength, but it's almost like right now, we're stumbling over that, where people feel that they're not heard. You know, the, some of the comments that came out there, I think are, are not so much a byproduct of immediate deficiencies with, with the board, although there could be. I think some of it might just be, we're, we're a bunch of really strong-willed, smart people who love our community. And I think if we can start to focus on the things that we have in common while recognizing the differences and see them as opposed to obstacles, but see them as, as assets. That's one thought I have. The thing for me about trust, and as those of you who know me well, and those of you who are getting to know me better, I'm all about sort of linear data. You know, if I see something and it strikes me as inaccurate, I want to research that. I get to the bottom of it. And I'm all about observable, measurable things. So for me, what I feel is happening in a lot of cases, that I, I hear one thing from one person and I see something else, and then I hear another thing over here and I see something else. And then I read that something is supposed to happen this way, but then something different happens. So for someone like me, who's highly analytical and a highly linear in my thought process, perhaps to a fault, my beloved husband would definitely say to a fault. It's difficult for me to reconcile that as accidental or of good intent, because to me, what I see is inaccuracy, and it's hard to reconcile when someone says one thing and does another. So I think some of what's happening is that all of us are hearing different things and then we're seeing different things. So it's almost, it's almost like there, there are multiple competing truths. And so it's hard to, it's hard to know what's really happening when you are reconciling what appears to be, for me, very conflicting information. And that kind of gets to something Peter was talking about, which is, you know, we're on this board and we have a service obligation to the community, but we're also parents, almost all of us, who are district, you know, kids in the district. So we have additional layers. Then we have these friendships with friends in the district, teachers in the district, other people. And so, in some ways, it would be so much easier if I didn't live in this town and I didn't have kids in this district. If I could be neutral, I feel like it would almost make it better. So I think that's a competing interest, because your friend will tell you one thing, your teacher friend will tell you another thing, your teacher friend from another district, you know, it, it's, it's complicated right now and it's hard. So, that's where I'm struggling, is finding what's really happening and reconciling it with this other thing that someone swears is true. I'm like, but your truth and your truth could not be more at odds. So how are we as a board supposed to reconcile what's really gonna happen here? That's, that's a big trust issue for me.
So, I, you know, in my experience on the school committee, one of the things I learned, unfortunately had to learn more than once, was that someone will tell you a story, right? And you'll say perfectly reasonable, you'll hear something else, and you'll think, you know, you'll kind of go with what you hear first, right? That perfectly reasonable. You go to investigate on another side, you hear another story, also perfectly reasonable, and you're sitting there going, oh, now I understand why that's an issue. So, some of this is taking a lot of information and trying to resolve it, right? And I think another thing is trying to under- And I think another thing is trying to understand, particularly in this environment, that you're hearing a lot of things and to separate what's, what's things to pass on and say, this is not an issue for the school committee, for me as a school committee member. I need to make sure it gets resolved, but not resolved. It's particularly to think, David probably has an easier time with it, Michelle probably has an easier time with it, here probably, and the rest of you who are, who are newer and still trying to sort of get the feedback. If you feel like over, and Michelle, over the time that you've been on the board, ask us to go on, that it's sort of figure out.
Oh yeah, I love telling people that, that's out of my wheelhouse. Like, it wouldn't, when, you know, now that I've been doing this for a while, you know, I'll hear what they say, and I'm like, yeah, that has nothing to do with the school committee, you know? Talk to a principal, talk to whomever, and just sort of send them the right way. Whereas, you know, when I first started, I thought, felt like everything was on me.
Yep.
You know, personally.
Yep.
Outside of the fees, right? Like, when community members have said, oh, the fees are, for user fees was too high. Well, that's something the committee can do something about, but most other things, we can't. But one thing that Dana was talking about, and I was thinking about this too, is that when we break off into smaller groups, into the working groups, and we have the policy working group, the negotiating working group, and the new one, finance and something planning one, I can't remember the name, but, those groups have well-defined tasks and goals, and we can get things done there. So how, it's like, we need to like figure out, what is the well-defined goal for the committee, the whole, versus the well-defined goal of, of the individual working groups, and then how do those meld together? Because I do feel like when work comes out of the working group, that the committee is, is building trust, that those, those working groups can be trusted to have done a good job, and we can just sort of go along with what they have come up with. But when it comes to like our whole work, I think we don't have trust when we're all working together. But it's weird that we can have it when we have these well-defined goals in small groups. So how do we get well-defined goals in the big group?
Yeah, Michelle, I think you were waving over there.
Yeah, no, I just following up, maybe just what everyone is saying is that we do feel a huge responsibility since we were voted in. And, and it's, it's difficult. And we, we do want to solve the issues at hand, but there's some things, like everyone said, that's beyond our control, and there's a process and a protocol, but there's so many demands, and we should all stay off the social media. And I, but I just, it just, we feel the weight of it, so we want to necessarily react. We want to solve, we, we're all strong people, we want to be a problem solver and not be heroes, but we want to make sure that everything's okay. So I think maybe that's what we're all struggling with right now. And even in a non, non-pandemic time, there's issues that arise, and we still feel that responsibility, so we're just struggling with that, and that's where all the issues might be coming into. I mean, that, that, we're, I, I know I'll, I speak for myself, but I think everyone feels the same way. We're, we're happy to have the burden. We're proud to serve our community, and we want to serve because we love this community, but it is at times overwhelming. In a non-pandemic time, it's overwhelming, and this time is especially so. So I think there's just a lot that's bubbling to the surface that probably wouldn't, not normally, so.
Peter, you've been quiet. What do you have to add?
No, I shared earlier, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay.
I want to go back to something, David, that you said within your remarks about doing the best we can. And I met with a group of seasoned superintendents today and a group of second-tier superintendents, and that was a prevalent theme. And, and Michelle, you, you hit on it as well. The enormity of the burden on us right now is huge. And yet, us responding to the community to say, we're doing the best we can, that's not an acceptable response, which adds to the weight of the burden. And I, I just think you might want to keep that in the, in the back, back of your minds.
Yeah, because it was hard when, you know, the community came and said, you know, we want our students taught by Hamilton One of Teachers, and, and we want a Hamilton One of Education. And we were trying to explain, like, we can't provide a Hamilton One of Education this year, because we can't have our kids all in the building, working together, learning the collaborative skills. And like that, that, there's still that expectation upon us to provide what we used to without the ability to do what we used to do. And it's been, it's, there's been so much criticism that it's really difficult for us to focus on doing the best for our kids, that, because we're always having to respond to, it's not the way it used to be, and we're like, well, we know, but we can't do it that way anymore. And hopefully, we will someday, or we'll invent something new and better from our experiences over these couple of years, so.
Hannah?
I think the hardest part of all of it is each one of us defines the best differently. They define acceptable differently, you know? So, so I think, and again, that can be a good thing, but I think that's where I'm, you know, really struggling. I think Michelle Horgan said it really well, is, you know, we feel this pressure of accountability. But I think for each one of us, it's hard to define, where does that stop and start, you know? And that's, again, I think it's a good thing to have different variances there, but I, part of the issue I see in, in all of those sort of challenges is I don't think we're on the same page about, well, we've done enough, we're doing the best we can. I'm not sure that we all agree what that looks like right now. So then it's hard to know, it's hard to get on the same page, because my version of the best might be different than David's, might be different than either of the Michelle's, you know? It's, so then you end up sort of struggling to define, well, have we done enough? And then, you know, for, and I think, I think you bring a good point, those of us who are new, I'm very, very compelled when I hear anguish in the voices of my neighbors and friends who are reaching out, who feel like we're not doing the best, and I feel like we're letting them down. So part of my sort of frustration at times is I, I hear it, and, you know, the expression of sort of being in a fire hose, right? We're all in a fire hose of information, and most of it's negative, most of the time. So it's hard for me to say, well, I'm doing the best I can. That's, that's, those are not words that I typically ever say. I'm always looking to keep making it better. And I think it's hard for us as a group to sort of delineate, what is, what is our limit? And where do we stop? And I feel badly for the superintendent as well, because I know one of the things on the agenda is to talk about sort of bandwidth, you know? And I, I don't think it's that anyone's slacking off in this group. I don't think effort is an issue, that, that's, that's not the problem. I think we're just defining where do we stop and start, that effort. And what, and, you know, Michelle Bailey, to your point, the community's expectations remain very high. And I, I'm okay with that, but I do think that, you know, we're, we might be at levels that are not quite close enough yet. So that's gonna be a problem.
So I think, you know, we're doing the best we can at the moment with the resources we have available to us? Like, does that add a little more context to the best we can? Because, I mean, to me, the best we can sounds like almost a, I think you, you sort of sense it, you know, I'm doing my best. But am I really trying to? But I'm, we're doing the best we can, we're working to do better, I think is something all of you, all of you are, you would add that, right? You would add that. If, if you said we were doing our best, you would add, and we're working to do better.
Continuously looking to improve, continuous improvement.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I want to get back to, we sort of veered off into the philosophical a little bit. But if we want to get back to, let's do, let's figure out if there's a couple of things we can start with tonight, to say, what, how can, what, what builds that trust that you are seeking and feel could be better than it is right now? And, you know, I, some of what I'm hearing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the communication, part of the lack of trust, I think, among the committee, or maybe among the governance team, is communication to the community? Is it also communication within the committee?
I'll bring up the elephant in the room. I mean, last week, we had a very contentious meeting, I would say. And I think we reacted to emails that came in from the community. And instead of going through proper channels, we wanted to get it addressed and taken care of ASAP, because it was time-sensitive. So surprises happened. And I think that surprise is what caused, to be honest, what caused the whole meltdown and the breakdown of the whole meeting. So if we were to take a step back, and, and I'm, I'm putting it all out there. If we were to take a step back and say, hey, had I emailed Michelle Bailey that afternoon, I would have gone in some direction is, if we could have put it on the agenda. I would have, you know, Michelle would have then brought it up to Superintendent Banoz to say, okay, is it appropriate to talk about this now? So I just think if we had taken a couple of steps back, if we could rewind that day, rewind that three days prior, or two days prior, or one day prior, whatever. Just, we need to know that there's protocols. Things do happen, and we need to be, we need to be nimble. I don't like saying that, but that's one of the catchphrases. But we also have to realize that there's protocols and procedures in place. And that's in Robert's rules and, and why things have to be done. But then again, there should be some wiggle room there, but again, done it respectfully and in a productive manner. So I, I don't, I don't know if anyone wants to add to that, or that stuff was time-sensitive. But again, had we approached it differently, it, we would, I think we would have had a different outcome for that whole meeting, so.
Yeah, when you said surprise, it, it made me think about a conversation I had with Mary Beth this, I don't know, sometime this week, it must have been? Maybe, well, it might have been Friday. Was that, like, there was a couple of things that happened in the meeting that were a surprise. There was, all of a sudden, there was the handbook on there, and, and all of a sudden, there was an issue brought up that was not planned for, and all of a sudden, like, a meeting that was anticipated to be two hours long was turning into four hours long. And it was very difficult to manage that, because it was unexpected. All of that was unexpected and happening at the last minute, and so, yeah, I think that was part of it. It was like, and, and, like, it seems like our committee has been receiving so much information at the last minute for so long that we don't trust that when we get to a meeting, we're gonna actually be prepared for that meeting, because we haven't, we've been, every meeting, it's like there's a new hot topic that comes up at the last minute, and it's partly because of the time we're living in. It's partly because, I mean, first we were dealing with the budget, and then we didn't know, then it was like, we didn't know when we were gonna have a town meeting, and then when we find out we have a town meeting, then we have to change the budget. And then after we find out we have the budget, and we have to find this new superintendent. And, and all of these things are happening at the same time, and it was just react, 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 and now we're, we need, part of trust is not being surprised by stuff, because you're prepared for it. And so I think we, in some ways, we need to slow down in order to be better to move forward. Like, go slow to go fast. If something's not cooked and baked and ready, then we shouldn't try and pull the unbaked cake out of the oven and serve it up, because it's not gonna be good. I don't know.
I, I think that we need to realize that we can never be 100% prepared for everything that's going on.
Right.
I, I know part of the rigidity of the agendas this year was in sort of direct response to the openness I used to run last year, and that's okay. We're trying to think about how to expedite meetings and things like that, and that's fine. I think what we run into a problem with is while we didn't have a topic on the agenda on Wednesday, we knew the topic was a hot-button issue within the town. So much so that the community comments were sort of not being censored, that's too harsh of a word, but were being worked around and asked about, you know, what the comment was gonna be around. So that topic wasn't brought up because it wasn't on the agenda. And rather than sort of realizing we needed to pivot at that moment, and take 10 minutes and add it to our agenda, so we can control the dialogue, we spent well over an hour and ruined the discourse of our meeting arguing about the proper protocols to make that pivot. And we will never have effective communications if we're so caught up on the protocol that we miss the larger picture. Right? And, and miss the opportunity to be proactive and reactive at the same time and use the opportunity to, you know, make a last-minute change if we need to. Because we, at that point, when we don't, and when we get so hung up on procedure and protocol, we become our own worst enemy. And we end up looking foolish as a committee. And we end up really getting further away from where we're trying to be. And, and so I think that's important, because yes, you want to be, and I, especially you, Michelle, have always been so great and liking to be prepared for everything. Unfortunately, you're in a role that you will never be prepared for everything. And it's just gonna come, no matter how much research you do and how much you plan, that they're just gonna come at you from every direction. And I'm speaking from experience. And you're in a much different place than I was for the past two years, you know? You know, so I, I think that, at that point, it's important for us to trust in each other, that nobody's trying to play gotcha, and that we're trying to actually help support when we're bringing up changes like that and saying, hey, here's, we need this opportunity to do this, and realizing that, you know, it, it is coming from a place of support and caring for the community, for the board, for our schools and students, and, and not trying to, you know, say, ha, I know you're not prepared for this, and, you know, trying to make you look bad. It, it, it's actually the exact, you know, opposite. I, I just think that we need to sort of keep that in mind. Because I don't see it getting any easier anytime soon.
Can I just make, before I call, and I, I might ask Chris to step in too, because you said a couple of things that I just want to comment on. So I did watch the first part of your meeting. And I think you might, you know, you have protocols and you have policy. They might not totally be in alignment. So that might be something that you want to go back and look at. If one of you is thinking about protocols and the other's thinking about policy, and they're not quite in alignment, that's gonna be part of the conflict, right? You're right, you're never gonna be totally prepared. But engaging in a discussion that you're not prepared for can have its own dangers as well. So that's something to think about as well. We often, always advise school committees who have a different, a different policy than you do. I did look at your policy, it does say that anything, that only items on the agenda are supposed to be, public comment is only supposed to address those. There are, actually, it doesn't even matter. I mean, we usually tell school committees, the best advice is to listen to the public comment, but not start a discussion on the public comment, because you're not prepared to have that discussion. Especially if it wasn't on the agenda and you don't know what's coming up. That, you know, thanking and making sure it's addressed subsequently is appropriate. With the caveat, right, these are different times. And subsequently might not be the appropriate thing. But there is, there is a danger to also saying, let's just dive into a discussion that nobody's really prepared to have. Chris, do you want to maybe?
I just, I think it's important also to look at the things that are simply beyond your control. You can't control a change from yellow to green or green to red. You can't control the fact that you may have ordered the devices in good faith back in April, and they're stuck at a border. You can't control the state budget, which we expect will be coming out this month. We're operating under a 1/12 budget. It's unprecedented. You can't control the square footage. You can't control the square footage in this building or at the Winthrop, and that determines how many of your children can come back. You can't control what the road looked like leading to the execution of your MOA or MOU. That has been hard work in some places. Don't know if it's been hard work here. There's a lot that you can't control, and that sometimes is the recipe for disaster when it comes to timely communication and when it comes to the need to bring something onto an agenda that wasn't on the agenda. If you were the school committee of Milton or the school committee of, of Westwood right now, who unexpectedly had to close their middle schools on short notice because of positivity, you can, you can be relatively sure that the closure of the middle school and the tracing processes that are going to ensue has turned up on their school committee agenda probably on pretty short notice.
Anna, you've had something.
Well, I think this, you know, for me, the sort of processing about last meeting, I think it actually kind of gets to, one of the bigger pictures we're talking about is what do certain things mean? So in this particular moment, there's a lot of emphasis on the word surprise. What does, what constitutes a surprise? And I think this is where each of us has a slightly different perspective, and I think as the chair, if you perceive something as a genuine surprise, then that is frustrating. I think the difference is, for many of us, and I can only speak from my own perspective, none of that was actually surprising. That, to me, was sort of an elephant in the room. So I think if you're responding to a perceived surprise, it does seem surprising. But the issues that we were talking about, and I think are in the community, you know, David was sort of talking about, it is the conversation in the community, I myself had raised it on a number of occasions as a, as an area of concern, so in my mind, there's nothing surprising about that agenda item. So therefore, I'm not going to respond to it as a surprise because it doesn't feel surprising. However, if you feel surprised by it, you know, it's sort of, it's, again, it's a matter of perspective, but I also think this gets to a trust issue where I'm saying something's not surprising. Other people are legitimately saying, I am surprised, and we're all in the same situation together. So for me, that, that is a breakdown of trust because I don't see how it couldn't have been known information based on emails, conversation, prior minutes, like, it's, it's the thing out there, but that's all my perception of it, right? So I think that's part of the problem. Like, we had a different emotional response and understanding. And I think, Dorothy, you touched on something really important, that there is a policy and there is a protocol, or, or past practice, which, if they're not on the same page, again, as someone who's very linear, who reads policy very fastidiously, I'm going to hone in on the immediacy of that, and past practice, especially as a new member, won't necessarily register, because I'm saying, but, 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 you know, and again, that's, that's something, I think it's really good that we can identify. So if there are, you know, since you work with us on policy, if there are policy variances with protocols, those things would be great to identify moving forward.
So with different perspectives and different expectations, how do you guys come to an agreement on, how do you, what's, what's acceptable communication? How does an agenda get formatted and set? I mean, I, I don't know if I'm going to be able to describe it well, but to me, the surprise wasn't the topic, it was the motion. Does that make sense? You, you say that topic shouldn't have been a surprise, but the motion to throw it on the agenda was a surprise. I think, I think that's what, Michelle, I'm, I'm not sure. Had I been, had I been chair, I would have been surprised by one of my committee members making a motion to throw something on the agenda right at the beginning of the meeting. So there's a different, I mean, again, it's perspective, right? It's, yours, your perspective is about the topic, my perspective was about the action.
Yeah, but I think at that same time, thinking about what, how I would have reacted as chair, I don't, again, from perspective, with the two people who were, you know, speaking from the audience or talking about this subject, it would then not be a surprise to me that someone from the board would then bring it up to, so that we could actually answer the question that seems to be.
That would point, yep, that would point.
Well, I think that-
It has been past practice not to respond to the public comments, so we've never had somebody come up and say, oh, such and such and such happened, and then be like, okay, let's put it on the agenda. That's just not something that we've really ever done, except for the one time we had something about, I think, advertising by the sports people having to get approved by us or something like that. But that's one thing. The other thing is, is this is a meeting to conduct business. It's not a talk show to solicit opinions from the public and then to, like, facilitate those opinions and then bat around ideas. That's when you would have a public hearing. This, so if we're going to have a public hearing, then that's fine, we should have a public hearing, we should set up a time, and you can just, like, let the public speak, and we can hear them. But, but these are meetings, they're not public hearings, so there's that. And then there's also the respect of the superintendent. If you're going to throw something on there that's going to require her to provide information, she should be allowed time to prepare that. And to, to not do that is just putting her in a position that's not really good, because we're not going to get accurate information if it hasn't had time to be processed. That's kind of like when I talk about go, go slow to go fast. You have to be prepared so that you can get the information to process it, to go forward. If you're just throwing stuff out, sometimes you're not, you're not getting a baked, you're not, it's not fully baked yet, so, yeah.
So how do you, so I'm hearing a couple of things that I think might help if, if you can settle on process.
Yeah.
Might help dynamics. So how does, how can you make sure that the agenda is appropriate to the, the moment in time, I guess? That you're, you know, that the issues that need to be addressed are on the agenda, that they're appropriately school committee issues to address, like, you know, you talk about, that they're, you may, there's times when you're going to want to hear about what's going on operationally, right? But the extent to which that becomes a discussion rather than a report out might be an important distinction to make. Do you have further questions? You might say, you know, you have different expectations than what you're hearing, or hopefully, we'll get to where we were talking about goals, and you're saying, this isn't getting us to our goals, or this is, you know, this is great, this is getting us to our goals, or, or whatever. But how, so, I'm kind of lost track there. So how can you have agendas that are appropriate to the work of the school committee, are appropriate to the moment in time, are accurate to what's going to actually be on the agenda? It sounds to me like that could be part, that's, I mean, that's partly communication, right? The agenda communicates a lot about getting ready for the meeting, gives you a chance to get in touch with the chair or the superintendent and say, are you going to cover this aspect on the agenda? I, you know, along with the information you're going to provide, can you provide, is this part of it? And then I, it sounds to me like there's really a need to look at some of the practices that you have and agree, whether it's policy or practice or protocol right now, are you all in agreement about how it's supposed to work? So that you don't get into a disagreement about semantics or perspective. Do you, do, you know, you, it sounds like, David, you had a practice that was, in public comment, talk about what you want, right? And that changed, but maybe that wasn't made clear to everybody. This is, like, some of what I talked about with superintendent evaluation, make sure that you say how you're going to create that composite evaluation before you go off and did it, do it differently than last year's chair and surprise everybody. It's kind of the same thing. A new chair, maybe looking at things differently, let's have this discussion about how the, how this committee with this chair is going to work together and communicate, instead of just maybe assumptions about new chair looks at differently, doesn't really have that discussion. Makes sense?
I think this is a very unique and specific example, though. This district had about a half dozen teachers take a sudden leave on a Friday, and we had a lot of parents that were very concerned about what was going to happen as we were returning to school on a Thursday. That gave five days for some sort of communication to go out, just to say, hey, this happened, we're actually kind of anticipating if they were going to go back, that we would have ended up losing a few, and we, we have it under control, don't worry, when your kids return to school in the morning, there will be, you know, a teacher there. Excuse me. It was Wednesday evening, about, you know, 12 hours before school was to begin, that that question still wasn't answered, and that's what was coming out in the public comment.
So that's a different aspect of communication.
It's a very unique situation.
Yeah, but a different aspect of communication, because that's not communication within this group, that's communication to the-
Well, I think there was also a failure within the communication within the group. I think that there was a lost opportunity of communicating with each other and with the superintendent about, hey, here's what's going on, here's how we're handling it if anyone asks you, and then we could have pushed that information out. Instead, you know, what was left was this, you know, very well-attended meeting, which everyone was there trying to find out that answer, and it was not on the agenda. So, again, hopefully, we never run into that situation again.
Right, so that gets to the point of what's the, what time, in this moment, what's the right thing to be on the agenda?
Well, and I think that, you know, from my perspective, speaks to the underlying sort of breakdown between protocol and, and policy. Again, you know, if we have policies that talk about, you know, if, if a member of the public brings something up, it can be added, I do think that there's parts of our policy that are vague, and when things can be up, I guess I would say, if we have a policy but we don't intend to use it, then maybe we shouldn't have that as a policy, or maybe that policy needs to be more clearly delineated. That, to me, is the part that's like, well, how are things surprising if we have a policy that gives you latitude to do it, and if we don't really want to do it, then maybe that shouldn't be our policy? So I think that's to, I think for me, the underlying question, you know, the big elephant in the room is, why is the community so upset? And, you know, there are different reasons, and I think we're responding to it differently, but I think by not addressing it, we're missing the bigger question is, what's going on that has so many parents so upset? And then, not necessarily to solve those problems, so that's the part that's, that's hard is, is when people are coming at you in this moment of crisis, it's not so much whether they are right or they're wrong, do you, they deserve to be upset, what is, I'm trying to get to the bigger question of, like, what's going on that's prompting this response from typically very, you know, collaborative, thoughtful people? I mean, this is, this is an unusual time, but I'm sort of saying, like, what's going on? What are we not doing well that's eliciting this kind of public interest, this backlash, this perpetual churn of discontent? There's got to be something that's discontenting, otherwise people would be happy, you know, we wouldn't be hearing this sort of fire hose of negative information. So that, to me, is the root cause, and that's the part that I think we should focus on. Like, that, to me, is the big, the big picture. But getting that on the agenda with everything else that we have to do, I mean, there's, there is a lot of work to be done. Some of it's very unglamorous, some of it's very pro forma. I know some people get upset when we spend time stalking about sports fees and things like that, and it's like, well, but we still have regular business in addition to all the other business. We can't pretend like that's not happening too. So I think for me, the high level maybe disagreement that's the root of this is, I don't know that the six or seven of us actually agree about what should be on the agenda at any, at any time. I think we're having a hard time getting to that point, so.
So I, see, like, this side of the room has been a little quiet. Anything to add from over here?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know how, I mean, I, it was helpful to me, what, Dorothy, what you, you know, as a new, I still feel very new in terms of, there are numerous times that I am not certain what I can or can't say, whether I can, you know, that, just in terms of sort of rules and regulations. So one of the things, and just sort of, well, one of the things you just said that was, I don't think actually is necessarily going to resolve anything here, but was helpful to me was certainly the idea of, like, you know, perhaps an item where you're, you're really just gathering information. I think that that's something that could be useful to me a lot of times on a, on, on an agenda, and I, and I feel like often, or, it feels like often every item on the agenda is a discussion, and I, I don't know that it need, not that, when you said that, I was like, you know what, that's often very true, that it would be very helpful to just have, and not that we don't ever have something presented, but we, our meetings are very long, and I don't know if that's even bringing up another can of worms, but are there ways to just present information, so that we have information in a public setting, so that it's presented properly to the public, but doesn't always need to be open to debate?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, particularly if there's not a decision to be made coming out of the, I mean, there's, in normal, in normal times, a lot of committees get a lot of presentations about progress, about what's going on, ask questions, right? But there's no action that comes out of that, that's part of the monitoring process.
And I guess the second part of what I, what I wanted to say is, I think in different ways, David and Michelle both, and maybe Anna, but both sort of touched on that the further in advance we can have the information, I actually really believe that that would make our meetings and our votes shorter and quicker, because I think that, like, it, not to bring up specifics, but just this, I, for whatever reason, I happened to see the email earlier, and I had time, and so I was, had read the handbook portion. It absolutely came late, and I'm not, this is not, but it was, when I was ready, I was like, here I am, I've got these three questions, and, or whatever they were, and the person who was, the person that was going to answer them was there. And I fully believe that if we had, like, that would have moved the meeting along, this is not a criticism about that specifically, I mean, I guess it is, but it's just an example.
It's an example, yeah, yeah.
That, like, if everybody had had the opportunity, like I happened to have, just based on just luck, that then, that wasn't going to be a really long, complicated conversation. It could just be boom, 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 I had a few clarifying questions, here they are, let's move on. I think the whole agenda that, you know, the, that it will move the agenda along more smoothly if everyone has the opportunity, and maybe even the opportunity to say, if you had it well enough in advance to send it to the chair, maybe I even would have sent those questions to, I don't know, maybe I would have, because they were really clarifying questions, like, I don't under, this is a question, not, it's not a debate or an argument, it's just.
Yep, yep. So I, maybe a little preview, I think when you talk about a work plan or a work, I forget, work map, work plan, that's, that will, in the, as you go forward, answer some of those questions, because when you know certain topics that you know you're going to have to discuss are planned out and you can get information well ahead, that'll, that'll help some of that. Yeah. Peter, Michelle, anything to, okay. So, so what I'm hearing, what, some of what I'm hearing is communication between meetings maybe needs to be more, don't tell Glenn I said this, robust, or, or frequent, so that there's some, maybe updates that come from the chair, from the superintendent that help you. You know, we always say, we don't, as school committee members, you never want to read something in the headline in the newspaper that you weren't given a heads up about, but there, without daily newspapers, without, sort of, the news cycle has changed, you know, there's certain things that you want to have information about, you can address if you get questions, that would be helpful to have without waiting for a meeting. So maybe that's something to look at that would help.
Right, because, because of social media, almost 100% of the time, I will hear things before the superintendent even has time to write-
things before the superintendent even has time to write the email.
Yep.
So you have to understand that just because you didn't hear it from her first doesn't mean it wasn't her intention for you to learn it from her first. But stuff is just posted all over the place. And like, literally, I will find out things well before I hear it from Mary Beth.
Yep, yep. And that, that's the way of the world.
Because that's the way of the world.
In an instance where, you know, I remember in, in Linfield once, there, you know, there was a series a while ago, there was a series of bomb threats, right, that were going around to all different districts. There was no way that the principal or the superintendent could get a word out to parents that the kids were all safe and everything was okay before all the kids had told their parents what was going on. Including one that got in trouble for being a little bit too dramatic when they called their parent, from their parents, saying that that was inappropriate, that was not right. So, so that, you know, it seems, when you feel like you're getting the communication, when you feel like you're getting the information, I think that helps build the trust. So some of the conversation, I think, needs to be, what, what's the communication we want, we need, that we agree on is acceptable? It's not going to be every detail. A lot of times when I talk to committees, I say, don't require so much reporting from the superintendent that they don't have time to do their, because all they're doing is reporting to you about the job they're doing. There's got to be some level of information that, you know, you agree this is, that there's an agreement, there's important information for the committee to have, but it can't be everything every day, right? That makes sense? So some agreement on that, that would help you have some confidence that there are issues that the administration is aware of, that the administration is addressing. And then it's, you know, I think some, if you can have a discussion, you know, we could be here three days probably and have this discussion with the limited time everybody's got. What's the discussion about what are your policies and protocols for running a meeting? How can you make sure that your agendas are reflective of what needs to be discussed? And at the same time, give you guys enough information to have effective and efficient discussions about what needs to be discussed or what decisions need to be made? Does that, any of that make sense? Is any of that helpful?
How do you go about doing that? Like, because like, you know, it's not necessarily, I don't know, what's a good example? The turf field, for instance. So that's been a topic that has been discussed for many years here, there, and everywhere. And there's things that have to be done with it this year. But it doesn't have to be discussed next week because we don't have action on it next week. But there may be somebody who wants to have action, so they want to have it on the agenda next week. Like, how do you determine when and where and how those fit into?
So I think, can I defer a little, Mary Beth, you want to talk a little bit about, do you want to talk about it now, or should we just wait? Because, I mean, to me, I, I've always worked on and advocated for making a, you call it, what do you call it, work map?
Work plan.
Work plan, I call it a year-long agenda, where you have a discussion amongst you guys. I mean, it's going to be more, it's not going to be the topics that come up immediately because you don't know what those are, right? But what are the topics you know are going to need to be discussed? Peter's desire for a goal around, you know, however it gets framed.
A learning management system.
Turf fields. How do you get to a strategic plan? What, you know, what are the steps for that? How are you going to do that? Some of the other priorities that Mary Beth has that she thinks that you immediately need to hear about. So where do those fit? Let's make a plan for, on the agenda, so that those of you who have priorities can make sure it's been heard and it's someplace on an agenda at the appropriate time to discuss it. Does that make sense? And that, that should be a committee, you know, it's like, to me, it's a beginning-of-the-year workshop. And the best time to do it is when you are talking about your goals, the work plan comes out of that, that goal-setting. And then you, because part of that goal-setting is, right, what are the, what are the priorities we share, right? Someone could have a priority that's not shared by six other people. That doesn't necessarily mean that it goes forward because you're a committee. You make decisions, you move forward as a committee. So there's got to be some sense of, this is the shared work of the committee. And not everybody's individual priority might, a little screwed up on the sentence structure there, but not everybody's priority necessarily makes it, right? Might in another time, but you have to have some sense of priority. You can't go off in seven people's different directions and make any progress. You've got to figure out together what are your priorities and your values that you want to move forward. So does that, does that, that was kind of a long answer to a short question.
Yeah, but it, stuff comes up during the year.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So how do you come across and say, okay, that, whatever thing, is going to be on an agenda, or that thing isn't going to be on an agenda?
So some of this is, it's brought to the chair, right? The chair and the superintendent have a discussion. For instance, if, I would say Michelle had an issue she wanted to bring up around a special education issue, right? And you know, in three meetings, you're going to have a presentation about special education, you would probably say to Michelle, we'll make sure that the information that you want gets incorporated into that presentation three meetings from now. Anna, I'll just, Anna or David might say, there's a, the community is really needing to know what's happening with six teachers. It's got an immediacy to it. It needs to be addressed. Either it's a communication in the meantime that lets people have the information in an updated school committee meeting, updated a school committee meeting. So I think, a couple of things. So I think it's the chair, you, no matter who the chair is, they're a little bit of a gatekeeper about what gets on that agenda. The chair and the superintendent need to work together to make sure if it's on the agenda, people are prepared for it. So, and then if, say, someone had a topic and the chair said, nope, not appropriate, the chair can always be overridden by a majority of the committee. So if someone had a topic that they wanted on the agenda and the chair said, no, not appropriate, they have the ability to ask the rest of the committee to have that put on the agenda and get it on the agenda, whether it's that night or a future agenda. The chair remembers the servant of the assembly, not the master. So is working to keep you directed, is working to keep you focused, but is not, is not able to determine what the focus is. Does that make sense?
So just moving, I, I think we all understand this, but any issues we have or concerns we have, it funneled through Michelle, the chair, and then the chair with the superintendent.
Yes.
Or brought up at the end of a meeting for future consideration topics, potentially. Yes?
To me, it's easier if it comes in an email so that then we can have time to think about it versus at the end of the meeting, thinking that's going to be on the next agenda because then it sets up an expectation, expectation that it's going to be on the next agenda, but it might not be on the next agenda because it's.
What Dorothy said.
Might be two away. Or it might be like, you know, after talking to Mary Beth, we really can't do that right now. So, which is why I brought Peter's thing to you guys last time. Like, it's really a lot to be doing right now, so we have to decide if it's a whole committee thing or if it's not a whole committee thing. And so, yeah. But if we're, to me, if we're spending 15 and 20 minutes at the end of a meeting discussing about what's going to be on the next meeting, and our meetings are already too long, that is a way to solve that. Because it's like, it's like that joke, like, well, that staff meeting could have been an email, right? If you can do it in an email, why not do it in an email instead of doing it when we're using everybody's time? Well, if that's not the way the committee wants to handle it, then that is also okay.
And here's the trick, you know, a future committee, a, a future item, future agenda items on an agenda can be a rabbit hole unless you are all agreed that you name the item, so you've got it on the record, right? And then you move on and let the chair and the superintendent have that discussion, and then let the chair get back to you and say, okay, it's on the next agenda, okay, it's on three agendas, no. And then if it's no, then you have a chance to bring it up to the full committee. But it's, it's not supposed to be a discussion of when it's on the agenda or if it's on the agenda. It's a, here are the topics, period. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, just as, yes, and as you were talking, it seems like we could, it seems like what we need is both of the things, right? We need everyone to do what Michelle said, funnel through the chair. So in my vision now, I'm sort of hearing it, that it seems like, that when we got to that agenda item, the chair would say, I have the following topics, and just list that, not, no discussion, no conversation, no, just, I've received the following topic, the turf field, the this, the this, the this, as potential future meetings. And that way, it's still on the agenda, and if somebody has something that the current meeting has brought up an issue for them that they would like to put on a future agenda, that would be the moment they could say it. But it would be just one more in the list. And if we all can, you know, commit to trying to screen them, you would already have the list because unless it happened in the last hour, right, then you would already, I don't know, it just seems like, for me, that seems like it's nice, it's important to keep it on there as an agenda item, but it doesn't need to be a discussion. It could just be a list.
Anna?
So I've been thinking sort of, you know, a couple of thoughts about this. One of them is, I think that it's important to recognize, and different boards of different kinds do this differently. Not everything has to be an action item, and a lot of boards, you know, it really is just informational. This is an update. Because I know this is true, if we're only relying on district communications that are directed to particular age groups, we don't know the whole thing. So I think, even though this is a business meeting conducted in public, the public does watch, you know, it is a sort, it is one of the many tools of information the district has, are the school committee meetings. Is it a vector? Because I know there's a lot of people that aren't on social media that don't have kids in the district, so they're not going to get a district email. The district's use of social media is a problem right now. Like, I don't know that we have access to those. They're not on Facebook, they're not getting emails. This, and there's no daily paper anymore, right? So a lot of members of our community actually look at this meeting as a data point. So part of my thinking about all the things we talk about is, it's a form of information because we know the public's watching. So to some degree, I think bucketing agenda items into, we have an update about this. Here are the four things we actually need to take action on. Because Dana said something the last minute that was really good, it's like, when are we ever going to take action? And my retort was, well, if we'd ever talk about it, we're never going to have action, right? So it's almost like, what things need a decision that night? And then what things are more of a, you know, step one of a conversation? I would call them planning. So sometimes boards break things into update, action, planning. There's never an intention that you take action on planning. Or Peter's, and I'm going to use Peter as a good example where I think the system Michelle was talking about has actually broken down. Peter, I think everyone in the community knows, Peter wants to talk about the learning management system. I mean, it started this meeting, we just talked about it. We've never had that on the agenda, even though it's like this fact, right? My new request of, I want to have a conversation about the feedback process and plan iteration. Okay, that's my issue. These things have been voiced, but then they don't make it. So maybe that is the next step, is to say, hey, committee, when are we going to talk about this? Because if it never gets there, the system has broken down. So I think it just might be helpful to clarify, not every, you know, different types of agenda items, which would also inform the urgency. You know, we talked about the title online, I think that's definitely not, has to happen right away. But we set a timeline that says by November, right, before the budget, like, before this. So maybe as we're preparing our agenda items, we could also just delineate how quickly we think, you know, what, how urgent do we think it is, as something of a framework? And then that will help inform the chair's, you know, perception of what it is. I think the problem's going to come in is like, well, what if there's a difference of opinion there? Which I think is kind of where we are in some of these issues, so.
Well, then you can have that discussion, right? But if you have that work plan, right, then you can have that discussion. And, you know, I, Dana, I like your idea. Do you know, email it, let Michelle review the emails she's gotten at the end of the meeting. And at that point, you may, well, okay, and then people can, and she can respond, you know, it can either, the, I always call the work plan like the most flexible document that exists, right? Because it's going to change. Things are going to happen to change that work plan. But you'll, you know, everybody has access to it. I used to say, you know, do a year-long agenda, and the chair and the superintendent would say, yeah, we have that. And the rest of the committee would be like, well, can we see it too? So this is a document that should be shared among the committee so that you can see what's coming up, so that you can comment, respond, and figure out, do things need to be adjusted, added, or whatever? So that's a piece of communication that I think will help. And then I think some discussion about, and I, obviously not tonight because Mary Beth will never get to her goal part, but some discussion about, and we can, in policy, maybe talk a little bit about, excuse me, are there places where policy and protocol might collide a little bit, and what do we do about that? But, you know, some of this, I think some of this will take care of the agenda stuff and make people feel like their voice is more heard, maybe bring in some of the equality that people talk about, improve communication. And I think all of that will help build, it's not going to be overnight, right? But will help build that trust, but continue to have that discussion. You know, if, if, if you have an issue with something that happened at a meeting, you can always call one other person, right? That's not outside the open meeting law to just talk.
You can talk to, because there's seven of us.
But, I mean, it's, you know, and I think one of the things you were saying earlier about having different perspectives, right? We all get to better discussions or decisions when different perspectives are there. And the value, you know, they always say to CEOs, don't hire yourself, right? Hire people who don't think like you because your corporation will be better for it. So there's a lot to that. But some of it is each of you thinking to yourself, how can I disagree without being disagreeable? Right? How do we debate the issues and not each other? And but that, and that's something that I think we all have to think about, what's your comportment at the meeting and, and try and help each other with that? So does that give you a sense, does he have a feel like, where can we go from here? I'm seeing some nods. Yeah?
Yeah, so like, I, I had an experience at work yesterday, the other day before, and, you know, it was like, wouldn't it be helpful if we just sent that report out at the time that the email came out? And I was like, yes. But it was a simple solution. So this seems like it's a simple solution. The simple solution is, you know, because we have to have the agenda on Friday, we really should say like, oh, by Wednesday, make sure you have items in so that by Friday we can put the list on the future topics agenda so that we're ready to go. It seems like it's a simple solution. So let's try it and see if it's, if it works.
But you know what? If somebody emails you on Wednesday afternoon and says, I'd like to, there's no reason that you can't. Say, you know, add that to your list. You know, obviously, as soon as possible, but there, there's, I mean, like Dana said, you've got the list, but if someone else at the end of the meeting says, can we add this, there's no reason. So, yeah, the more information, the further ahead, the better. But this isn't an instance where you're going to be discussing. It's just making a list, so, and then you can take that and deal with it later.
And, and even, I'm just, even logistically, like, that's an extra step, getting it from your email to be printed on the agenda. And I'm not in your position, but you might choose not to worry about whether the list gets printed on the agenda because you're going to say it at the meeting.
Okay.
And that's just my opinion, but like, it's another, it is another step, and it is another.
Responsibility.
But, you know, in other words, like, yeah, maybe that's nice to have it listed, but also, we're talking about future topics for the future, so you're, you know, you're going to be providing that information at the meeting.
And you're not going to start deliberating on them.
And you're not deliberating, you're just listing.
So before I turn it over to the very patient Mary Beth, any other comments?
Well, the, some of the documents in the packet, is it the intention at some point, we also, Michelle Bailey, execute some of these? Are they just samples? Or is, are we, à la Dana, I'm going to channel my inner Dana right now. Are we driving towards an action step on any of this? Is that something to do at a different meeting when we've had a chance to really reflect on what we want? Or what do we do with these protocols?
So I, you know, the protocols, I don't know if the same ones were in the packet that I pulled off the, pulled off your website, that are clearly not, not created by the committee that's in place right now. So generally, a new committee, which is as soon as at least one person changes, right, should be going through the protocols. Honestly, what I would suggest is that the first step may be that the policy subcommittee sits down and looks at some of these and says, you know, here are some places where there may be, we may need to look and decide which way we're going to go. These have been in place for, I don't know how different they are from the previous versions that were on the website. Generally, a new committee will look at the protocols, make some decisions about, are there any adjustments that we want to make or do we recommit to them? So that would be a future agenda item. I don't think tonight would be the time to go parsing through all of them. And I also think, you know, I think last year with Julie, the committee was regularly rating itself on how it did on each of the protocols. When I read through the ratings and read through the protocols, I would say that right, where you are right now, you wouldn't be rating them the same as you were last year. There would be differences. So what Julie, Michelle and David and Peter, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but did Julie have you go through each meeting and rate how the committee did and then send them to her?
We did that through probably December.
And then she tracked and averaged?
Yeah, we did that through December.
Yeah. So she did it over a number of meetings and tracked and averaged how you did? And then I think the intent was that the ones where you felt like you needed work, you would just pull those out and only concentrate on those until you could see some improvement on those. Is that right?
The intent was to review it and find out where those were.
Yeah, and that COVID happened?
Well, I had a car accident and that was supposed to happen in policy. So then we didn't meet for two and a half months, so. So it didn't happen. But that was the intent.
So to answer your, I mean, my answer, it's not my committee, so. But my answer would be, I would hope that at some point you would review these and decide whether you wanted to make any adjustments and commit to them as a group, however, the adjustments that you make.
I mean, is that something we can decide now that we're going to do that? And, or do we need to, is that something for the policy subcommittee to do, or?
I think you can decide, I mean, I don't think it needs to be a vote that we're going to decide to look at these. I think you want to decide that at some future time, you'll have a discussion on the protocols.
Yeah, I think we need them. The question is how to do them, I think. Is that what you're asking? Well, I just, in other words, I'm imagining that the way to do this, and I don't, I'm open to other, but it seems like the way to do this is to have a small subgroup do them and then present them. And I, I wasn't here last year and I don't know about the rating, that system. But I do know that there's tremendous power, what you focus on grows. And there's tremendous power just in doing the rating, even if you never got to the part where you, that's just my opinion, but I've seen that, even if you never got to the part where you actually sorted through all the data. Just focusing and having to look at these and, like, I, I have to imagine that there's productivity and in doing the exercise of making sure that these are the protocols that we really want. And so I think there's value in that. And I don't know how that gets done, but it seems like we could commit to doing that tonight if that's, I don't know.
Can I ask, where did the protocols come from? Is this a work product that you and the superintendent did, or Dorothy, or?
So a number of years ago, the school, based on, you know, I don't, were you here, Dana?
I think it was David was chair at the time, I think, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not, I don't remember whether Peter was here or not. I, maybe not. But we, you know, we went through sort of the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and the school committee and, you know, how, where were their issues? And then had some sample protocols from other places. And the committee went through and said, you know, these are the ones that make sense for us. Developed the protocols and that, you know, obviously voted to adopt them and signed, and signed the protocols. That apparently happened for a few years and then fell by the wayside for a year or two. But that's typically the process. And I was actually looking back at the, the meeting, the August meeting where I was here. And the intent at that meeting was to sort of review those. And then we went off in another direction or decided there wasn't time or something at that meeting. So it wouldn't be, often Dana, as you say, there is a group that goes off and takes some, you know, you, you might individually send feedback to, if you wanted the policy subcommittee to take it on. Everybody send their individual feedback to the policy subcommittee. Let them draft something to bring back to the full committee for discussion and editing and adoption.
Do, okay, so do we want to make that decision tonight? Or do we want to discuss it in the future?
I mean, I kind of feel like right now, part of our operational issues are being driven by the lack of standard protocol. So I kind of feel like we're a little bit like a ship without a rudder. So even though it's not in the inferno, I think if we have future meetings like the one we just had, that won't be productive. So if this will help us not have those kind of meetings again, I think it would be good. I mean, I guess I was sort of saying specifically, because I could see the dates on the other one, but this first one that starts, it has sample in red, doesn't have a date. I guess, do we have anything?
I think it's from somewhere else, too.
Someplace else. So, I mean, I, I personally think starting on some level at policy makes some sense. But I do think ultimately, getting back to the idea of equity of voice, I think everyone, if we're going to all agree to them, we all really have to feel like we had a stake in owning them. Like, I think we all have to agree to it. Otherwise, it doesn't work, so.
So Mary Beth has suggested, one of the things we need is just a little bit more, to me, when we talk to you. You look surprised, okay. Was that we should have like a couple more workshops over the course of, you know, the next three months. So we could say, okay, next workshop, policy could come forward, just a quick review, and then we can all discuss the protocols together. Or we could just, you know, make it a little bit longer because it won't be pre-mixed together and do it all together. Or we could just have policy do it and then.
I mean, I think it'd be helpful if we all had a standard document to work from. You know, like, something in writing that we could put together. And, I mean, I think policy could start with that and then.
Because, I mean, I don't want to put this onto policy because I'm not.
I heard you volunteers for work. I heard it.
But, but I also think it, what, you know, it makes a lot of sense to say, everyone is going to, everyone is going to send their thoughts to the policy committee. And I mean, and then, that seems to me like a good action step, right? That everybody says.
Typically, when I work with committees and we get to the point where they're ready to talk about the protocols, I do mention, you know, the laws and sausages thing. Like, doing the editing doesn't necessarily have to happen at a full meeting. So sending it off to a smaller group to do, sort of, you know, take the feedback and put it together and bring it back to the full group with something to work from is better than starting with a blank sheet of paper on the full group.
Yeah. Well, and I think your idea that there may well be places where a strict reading of policy, which is what I tend to do, doesn't conform to protocol. And so I think that, you know, if we, I think it would make sense to sort of do a SWOT analysis coming out of policy and make sure that we're all, you know, and maybe there's policies we need to change. You know, maybe we actually need to change the policy to conform to protocol. But I think without knowing where the cleavages are.
It's your decision which way it goes, there's no.
Yeah.
All right, so let's just go with that. Policy's going to come back with something sometime, maybe, I don't know. Are we, just, are we, and maybe, maybe, Anna? I mean, I would say, I mean, is there a way to, that the policy group could send an email saying, please provide your feedback, here is the form, or whatever? Or do you want to work on it first and then ask us for feedback?
I mean, I feel like we've got a lot of content to start from. I mean, I kind of, and again, many of you have been on this, you know, for years now. So I don't know that we totally have to reinvent the wheel because many of you have agreed to several bullets already. So in the interest of time and sanity, I might say, why don't we all, since we all have the same documents right here, why don't we go through the three different samples that have been given to us? And people could kind of say, you know, I really like the language here, I don't that. And maybe they could kind of put together, you know, your best version of the plan. If there's something new you want to add, then, you know, add that. If there's something you are seeing, you're just like, oh, my God, I can't believe they agreed to that, you know? Then we could talk about it. But I think just in interest of moving forward, to me, this is a framework of a common lexicon that we can start with, that is recently is 2019, 2020, 2018, you know, in a relatively near past. A majority of this board has already agreed to. So the interest of not reinventing the wheel, why don't we start with what we have and just see if there's things we need to change? And I guess I would say if people have comments, send those to the three members of policy and we'll kind of try to distill it. And then at the next meeting, we can add that. Might delay INGJ, whatever we are in our process.
INJD.
Whatever we are, it might delay it.
So my only concern with that is feedback is deliberative and we shouldn't be doing that outside of a meeting. So how does that work?
No, I think if, send it to one person, you could send it to me and I'll bring it to the policy subcommittee.
Okay, perfect, okay. So we should send you comments that we might have, okay, to Dorothy, okay.
Can I turn the mic over to Mary Beth?
I think we can. Are we, do we have a, well, I guess we're wearing masks, but we don't have to change it, so that's good, okay.
We're only on item number one.
Yep, the next ones hopefully are quick.
Yeah, but you know what? This is more a presentation with some discussion, so. And hopefully, Mary Beth will be more concise than I was.
Thank you, Dorothy, I appreciate it. If people don't mind, I may just move this. Many of you know I'm vertically challenged and I can't even really see David and Yana when I'm sitting over on this table. That works better. So I'm coming to you tonight with a plan. And I'm, I'm coming at a time when I, I think in a typical environment, I would want to spend more time thinking about this and coming to you with more details and a more robust explanation as to why I think the following things are important. But I, I need to be really blunt in this moment. What I see occurring right now is someone that stepped in from, from the outside and came into this district on July 1 is that there have, there have been some challenging system issues here. There've been some problem-solving protocols that aren't well-built out. There've been significant cuts and reductions at the end of last year. There's been a major transition of superintendent leadership. And then you layer on the pandemic, right? And what I see is that we have a system that's starting to break and that we need to take action. And I want to talk to you about what I think is important in terms of taking that action. We have good people here, we have good kids here, we have good families here. But, but I am, as your superintendent, telling you that I think that we are getting close to a crisis situation and we need, we need to start to take action and develop a plan. So what I had shared with you in advance of the meeting is what I would call my preliminary observations. And my intent is to provide you with a more detailed report after I have more time to continue to conduct interviews, do document reviews. I've spoken with all of you initially when I came in, I've spoken with the leadership team. We now have a faculty advisory council. I've had office hours over the summer. And I've had an opportunity to observe how a lot of things are working. And so these are still preliminary, but I am hopeful that they give good direction in terms of how we might move forward. And I think you'll see a lot of the comments I heard you make reflected in the ideas that I'm going to put forth. So the first thing that I think is really critical to have happen here is the idea of focus, right? And if you see the, the top picture, it's, it's actually some rudderless sailing. You use that word, Anna, right? And I, and I really get the sense right now that the district is rudderless, right? And so what you see are sailboats knocking into each other. And whichever way the wind blows, that's, that's the latest turn and twist that occurs. And that, in that environment, it starts to feel somewhat chaotic. And what's really critical at this moment is to start thinking about how we get focus and goals in place. So the bottom picture is a crew team. We're heading here. Everybody on that boat knows where we're going. Everybody's contributing to getting there. And so what, what are the steps that start to need to happen to shift from kind of this rudderless way of operating into a more kind of crew-based focused approach? And I, I offer a couple of first steps for us to be looking at, knowing that we are in the midst of a pandemic. So what we might normally be able to accomplish, we have to be a little bit more reasonable based on the realities that we're facing. But we can take baby steps and we can move forward. So the first thing that, that I think needs to happen is that I need to develop or identify a process, a funding source, and a timeline for developing a five-year strategic plan and bring that to you. I wanted to quickly comment about why, why I see that as so important. You have in your packet an example of a strategic plan that we did in my last district that took about, from the Portrait of a Graduate to the, the plan, took about a full year. But this document then drove what was happening in the district. And to just speak to that a little bit more, what you see happening is that we took that document and each year, this is another handout that's in your packet, we had what are annual goals. Here are the things that we are going to accomplish that are in this plan. We have all these strategies, year one, here's what we're going to work on, right? And so you had your goal statements. They were voted on by the committee. The committee said, yes, this is where I want you to head the ship, right? Then this colorful one that has red and green and yellow. When we launched the school year with our, our staff and faculty, we said, these are the goals that we are working on this year. See the stuff in green? That's the central office focus. We are working on that. If you are a pre-K-12 teacher, a counselor, a nurse, an athletic director, you're working under the social emotional piece of these, of these identified areas. If you're a three-six classroom teacher, you're, you're working on math as one of our academic foundations. If you're in these other categories, you're focused on really doing research and development around our portrait, right? And so when we started the school year, everyone knew, here's how I'm going to contribute to the plan, right? And then when we got together with our leadership team, there's another handout, where the leadership team came up with goals and said, okay, if this is what we're going to be doing, then this is what we're going to focus on in our leadership work. And we came up with three goals in our leadership team, right? And what is happening right now in the absence of this structure is it's really hard to move forward. So getting that situated and started is really important. Just go back. One of the things that I also wanted to point out to you in this work is something called A Portrait of a Graduate. And many of you have heard me speak of that. But A Portrait of a Graduate is the work of the community coming together and. But A Portrait of a Graduate is the work of the community coming together and saying, here are the, here's the outcome we want for our educational system. When students cross that graduation stage, what are the skills and the dispositions we want them to be able to have? That's our North Star when we build a strategic plan. The Portrait of a Graduate is the what? What is it that we want to accomplish? What is our goal? And then the plan is how we get there, right? So in thinking about this, I, you know, I, I fully intend to come to you and say, here is a timeline, a funding source and a process by which we can create a strategic plan and build a Portrait of a Graduate. I think that that's going to be critical work. The next piece that's here is that the community, the committee workshops, that we continue to schedule these so we can continue to have this conversation about where we're headed, right? And pulling together to be sure that we're all rowing in the same direction. And to build out a work plan. And I'll show you a draft of one at the end to kind of get a sense of what this would look like pulled together. The next goal that I think needs to get addressed immediately is this question of capacity. As all of you know too well, in June, we lost 22 positions from the district. And that has created some significant challenges. Those challenges would have existed in a normal year and they are exponential in the midst of a crisis, right? Particularly related to central office functions and curricul, and the area of curriculum instruction and assessment. So what, what the second goal is related to is to get organizational charts and staffing plans in place that will address these issues. And these, this needs to be done prior to the development of the fiscal year '22 budget, right? Because if we're going to build a budget that is going to address these deficiencies, we need to know what it's going to look like to do that. So there are some specific action items here around looking at our HR functions and in the office, what are the right procedures and protocols? But I can tell you right now, we are focused on getting just the basics in place right now, right? And, and you need to understand that we are operating at, at an incredibly tight level. So we need to get the, a clear plan in place for developing efficient processes and procedures. We need to rebuild the curriculum instruction and assessment part of this district. I would say we are probably in the bottom 1% of the state in terms of what we have in place right now that drives our outcome. We have not a single position in this, in this district in any way, shape or form dedicated to curriculum instruction and assessment. That is remarkably unusual and that needs to get fixed. And at the same time, we need to be sure that our teachers have strong voice in the development of that so that they see that as a function that is helpful to them and we get their feedback in terms of how we build curriculum instruction and assessment. So I am looking to set up a team that's going to go visit some other districts that have, that are high functioning, that have similarities to us, get the team out there to look at a number of different models so that we can come back to you prior to the development of the budget and say, this is what we need in order to, to build this out again. And then finally, under the issue of capacity, is to look at, at the entire function of central office. It is, it is not working well. We, we do not have the systems, structures, protocols in place despite remarkable efforts from Vinnie and Tom who are just knocking their socks off, keeping this place afloat. But we need to study that, look at it, and again, come to you with a plan with what that could look like, bearing in mind the fiscal realities that we all know that we're dealing with. But how do we get a central office that's functioning well? What is the plan? And it needs to happen prior to the budget development. Goal three is related to professionalism. And I think we, we can all be well aware that in order for us to have this district well-funded and supported, there has to be a level of confidence in the professionalism and functioning of the organization. And one of the things that I observe is in terms of how we solve problems in the district, what methodologies do people use to solve problems? And, and some of them are not particularly effective. And in getting that clarified so that we, we do not have a situation in which we have issues that should not be discussed publicly being discussed publicly. People, what, what I would offer, just to try to keep moving here, is this graphic, which is, I find to be one of the most powerful ones that I, I've used in my career. So if you're A and you are upset with something that's happening, that's B's responsibility, if you tell C about it, you're not going to solve the problem. And if C, if C gets involved, then they're part of the problem, right? What we need to get fixed in this district is when somebody has a problem or a challenge, to be clear, to clearly communicate, here's the, the correct procedures and protocols that you use to solve the problem. And if, if the person that can solve your problem is B, is B, then that's where A needs to be going. And if somebody goes to C, C needs to tell them, you need to go to B. And we need to get that in place so that we don't end up with what often feels like chaos. And that, that problems are, you know, and there's a limit, of course, to what you can control out in social media. But having these issues debated in social media, instead of having people go to the people that can help solve the problem, that's something that we really need to focus on. And I think that we need to publish clearly. If you are a parent and have a concern, here's where you're going. If you're a teacher and you have a concern, here's where you're going. So that people know, right? And I don't, and that, that oftentimes in absence of clarity about what you do, you have people doing things that are not particularly productive. So getting really clear on what are the ways in which people solve problems in this district. Looking at, and we discuss that here, how do we identify a clear process and procedure for additions to the school committee agendas, right? In absence of clarity, you get chaos. One of the things that, that I know that I feel really strongly, that I need to do better at in my position, despite some of the capacity challenges that we're having, I have got to figure out a way in which we be sure that the, the agendas are posted by Friday, that they are final, and that the information that needs to be on there is on there. Because of what we are struggling with at central office, we are trying to rapidly deal with a number of different issues. But that too leads to, to a situation that doesn't feel like it's well structured, that it doesn't feel professional. And I'm going to share with you that that's something that I feel really committed to in terms of trying to solve this problem. And, and again, working with the chair and potentially chair and vice chair around going over the agenda so that we are clear on that. And it sounds like there was some really helpful movement here as a group as to how you want to work with that. But the, by, by publishing these, by knowing what the process is, that should really, really help to come across as a professional, well-run organization that the community can have a great deal of confidence in. And then finally, in this category, what you were discussing is that what are the procedures and protocols within this, this group in order, how do you want to operate? That, that's really important to get in place. Finally, in this particular section, I want to talk about foundational literacy. And this is something that I've spoken to members of the leader, literacy team about. This is something that came up in my inter, interview around the challenges that we have with so many students ending up in special education, that, that they are struggling to get what they need and the, the district is having significant financial issues because so many, many students are going out of district. And how do we look at that as a system issue? And basically, what we know about particularly the language-based issues that are coming up in our district is that there is a, a science to get students up in reading. And that this work was identified by the literacy team last year. As I observe it, I, I believe that they are spot on in their analysis, that we need to look at building out what we would call tier-one reading instruction that is based on the science of reading in the primary grades. We need to get really good at delivering tier-two intervention so that when we see students struggling, do they need more repetitions? Do they, they're, do they need a repeat of the instruction? Because many students can have their reading challenges solved through a, a real solid tier-two intervention. And then absolutely, we have some students for whom they need the more structured, more detailed, more scaffolded reading programs that come with an IEP. And, and right now, they're, because we don't have the level of tier-two built out, that, that oftentimes it appears that many more students show up in an IEP situation that could have been serviced in a different way. And we need to study that more, understand that more. Because if we get good at that, kids are going to more quickly get the help that they need and that we can service students in the most efficient way possible. And so that is the fourth issue right now that I think that we need to look at. So I put those four goals in front of you, thinking about the fact that it would, it will probably take a year to put a strategic plan in place with all the community vetting that needs to happen with that. And we can't go a year without any goals, right? So my suggestion to this committee is to take these goals, and I, I may have some refinement of those in January after we've had some more time to look at it, and to, to take them and put them into a work plan and that this becomes the work of the committee. These are four critical areas that need to be in place in order to move, move us forward. So what, what that could potentially look like comes under what I, what Dorothy was talking about as a work plan model. So what you see here is that you take the dates of the meetings, right? And you say, okay, what is it that we know needs to happen? So basic repetitive things that show up are placed on, on the calendar. You can see over here, these are the categories that we typically have on the agenda, new items. We've added COVID management, finance and operation policy. Then we say at each meeting, okay, with these goals, when are we going to report out to you as a committee about what kind of progress we're making on this? And we map it on to the work plan. We also look at when does the budget have to be taken care of, right? Because we know that budget is coming up. We know which items here have to happen before the budget and make sure that they're mapped on there first. We look at when, when's the town meeting? When's the reorganization meeting of the committee? And we build it out so that we have a sense of what, how we keep track of these critical items that can move the district forward. And that, so in terms of thinking about an agenda, that, one of the things that becomes apparent, it was certainly apparent to me as I just started building it, the committee's pretty booked out for the year in, in terms of the essential work that it needs to do. And that many of the issues that are coming forward, if they are redirected to the buildings, to the teachers, to the principals, and if, and if people go through those channels and they're not working to the superintendent, we need to be working on that stuff. That we need the committee to stay focused on these higher level issues and goals so that we can move forward. So if you, you look across here, we, we have, what, one, two, three? We have five meetings before, we need to put a first budget in front of you. That is remarkably complex work, given that we don't know what curriculum instruction is going to look like next year, given that we don't know how we're going to go back and, and meet some of the challenges that are existing in central office. If we don't start that now, we're going to be in trouble. So this is what I am proposing that we put into place so that we can manage the discussions. Then we can also look at, you know, policy needs to get this on the agenda, negotiations needs this on the agenda, capital planning needs that. And we can say, okay, well, that meeting's already looking really heavy, let's put it on this date. So that it, it also helps us to try to manage the length of the meetings that occur. And then when these other topics come up, you have something to put them up against, right? Does this rise to a level that is more important than what's already on here? And there may be some topics that absolutely do. But there may, but, but you also may find that, wow, if we take that one on, that means we're going off course with this and the other thing. So this is the, the model that I would suggest that we work from. Again, this is a very, very, very rough draft where I kind of just dumped things in. But it gives you a sense of how we could structure our work together prior to getting a strategic plan in place. So let me stop there and take any questions, comments that you have to, to better understand whether or not this meets your needs. Peter?
Hi Superintendent, thank you. You mentioned no one is in place to direct curriculum and assessment instruction and that we are going to visit other districts to see how it's done. Didn't we just lay off a director of curriculum and instruction? Was that not working or can we bring that person back?
What I would say is that I, I have heard a variety of feedback across the district around some of the structures were working and some of them weren't. So if you're going to put a new structure back, it makes sense to go study what that can look like. And that, and, and I would say that it's critical that we have teacher voice in this process, that we have administrative voice in this process, and look at what our options are. You know, the, the challenge is that we have absolutely nothing in place other than I think a one period a day from our, our middle school, in middle, secondary curriculum coordinators, they have one period a day to do all coordination across all grade levels. And there is nothing at the elementary level. You will remember that we, we, you voted in a teacher on special assignment at the elementary level. And then given staffing issues, we could not find a candidate that we felt comfortable putting in a classroom, an open classroom position, so we moved that person back because we felt it was more important that the person be working with kids. But it is a very unique opportunity to build a curriculum instruction and assessment department up from scratch. And it, it, I, I would say it requires a level of thoughtfulness to do this well. You will probably never get this opportunity again. You will probably never get this opportunity again, and, and it is worth doing it right. Anna?
I just had two more points. Can I, can I continue? One is that I'm concerned, because the foundational literacy is a, was a huge concern of mine, and I even made a motion back when we were cutting, cutting the budget not to eliminate the four ELATAs. And now I just feel like, now we're, we're playing catch-up. But again, that was not under your watch. And I was also, I was wondering, is it my understanding we've hired an HR, separate HR firm to manage some of our HR functions, and are we paying more in contractors for that than we would have been had we kept an HR?
We, we are currently working with an HR organization to help us process leaves. We, we cannot function without HR support. In this, in this environment, and with 300 employees, you can't function without HR support, but particularly in the pandemic, to, to give us advice, guidance, to help process paperwork, we have contracted with an organization at this point. It is not costing the amount that a position would, would do. I'd like to recognize Vinnie, who is taking over a lot of those responsibilities. Eric Tracy did a lot of work over the summer, and I am doing work on this. So we, the three of us are piecing that together, along with a consultant group that has a level of knowledge that we need in order to make good decisions.
I'm just wondering if it was, again, the right move. Thank you.
Peter, are you asking sort of the financial up or down of that decision?
Yeah, both was, you know, it's taxing on everyone in the central office. I'm just wondering if we are paying more for the HR consultants than we would have been paying had we kept an HR person?
We, we are not currently paying more, but what is happening is that people are being pulled off of their other positions, because there's, there's a limit to what an HR outside organization can do. So again, Vinnie is handling a lot of this, some of it ends up in my lap, some of it, and over the summer, Eric Tracy was taking this on. So we dispersed the work as best we could across the district, and then hired on a consulting firm to, when we identified those things that we collectively were unable to do.
I just don't want people to feel abused because they're asking to do more than their job description requires.
So I have a couple buckets of questions, I guess, one of which just surprised me. Can you, can you go back to what you said about the special teacher on assignment not being hired and being, Rebecca, that is surprising information to me about something we allocated, but then didn't do. So I'm kind of curious to actually have you, I guess, circle back. Did anyone else know about that? Because I didn't realize that we hadn't hired that person, so that's...
But we actually did hire the person and bring them in. And they worked over the summer to do some of the work that we needed for that role. And then they, we could not back, we did not feel like we had a strong enough candidate to put into an open classroom position. So we moved that person back into the classroom.
I'm confused. We're talking about the position that you came to us for an allocation like six weeks ago, seven weeks ago?
Like August, right?
I thought there was a new position, special teacher on assignment, and we all agreed to it, sounded like a good idea, and we're going to go off and do that. So I'm, this is one of those things where there's, I think, a communication breakdown that leads to a trust issue. So that's what I thought we did, but now you're talking about someone in the summer and a different, so, I mean, this is, this is actually like a real-time example of something that makes me say, what are you talking about? Because I don't, so can you, I want to understand what you're talking about, to make, in my mind, we had a new position that we had created for a one-year temporary assignment, and it was not for over the summer, it was like six or seven weeks ago. Can you help me understand what you're talking about?
Yes. And again, this is the reality of what we are dealing with in terms of massive changes that are occurring, not just here, and I need people to understand this, that this is, this kind of HR challenges are happening everywhere, right? And so in the midst of all this challenge, there was a decision made to, we, we made the decision that it was better to have that teacher in a classroom, working directly with kids, and we would sort out how to do the rest. So in all of the issues that we are managing, in all the information I'm trying to provide you around what's happening, that one just didn't make it to the list.
Okay, so I just, so there's no new position, that old teacher was moved back to their original position?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. So I guess my sort of general question about some of the specific requests, which are, I, I understand where they're coming from. What do we do if we don't necessarily agree with them, I guess, is one question? Like, I understand the motivation, but I don't agree, which I think is a general thing. This is, and just in terms of language, I know a lot of times when people say things like, I don't understand what they're actually saying is, I don't agree. It's not that they don't understand.
Yeah, no, and I, I think it's important that we work that through. If there are things here that you don't agree with, we, we should have that conversation.
Right, probably not tonight, but that was sort of a general workflow idea of if we have a difference of opinion of some kind about what should or should not be the flow, that's one question. One question I have, this is, and I think it's related to some of the issues that we're getting from the community about directing people to the right district personnel, because I do respect that we're not supposed to be in day-to-day operations, I fully understand that. The problem is that, and I'll speak only for myself, I'm getting so many essentially operational complaints, that people have gone to the building principals, or they have gone to you, or they have gone to the people that seem like the right channel, and they're not getting a satisfactory response, or in some cases, not getting a response at all, which perhaps is a workflow issue, like a volume issue. So I respect that, but then at the same time, if someone's coming to me and saying, but I'm not getting an answer from the vice principal, I'm not getting this, I'm not getting this, and then I say, well, I wrote to this, I mean, we're sort of stuck in a loop, and I don't know how to break it, other than to say, well, I'll try to bring it up in a meeting, I'll bring it up with the super. There's a breakdown happening of the normal process. I don't know how we work our way out of that right now, so...
Yeah, I would continue to request that if somebody is having a challenge reaching somebody, or not getting the answer they want, again, typically, the, the chain of command is you speak to the, the child's teacher. Sometimes that issue can be resolved there, sometimes it can't, speak to the building principal, and then if it can't be resolved there, to move it up to my office. The, the number of things that have been brought to my office as a direct request, I can count on one hand. So that if people are coming to you saying, I'm not getting an answer from the principal, and I'm not aware of that, that's a problem. And, and so we want to fix that, if somebody's not getting a response. But it, that person needs to be directed, that A-B-C chart. If what they're upset about is they're not getting an answer from the principal, then either you're, you're continuing to, to reach out to the principal, the secretary, or if that is not working to the superintendent, but talking to a school committee about, member about that, that is not a school committee member's job to solve that, that's our job to solve that. So it needs to come to us in order to know that it's an issue.
And then if they're still dissatisfied with that resolution, then what would you advise us to do?
In terms of going all the way up through the superintendent, then I would say it depends on what the issue is, right? There, there are some issues that may be broad enough that to say, okay, I'm going to go to the school committee and ask that that, they could come to public comment, they could email the chair and let them know. And there are some issues that, that probably would not end up in a school committee piece. In a general, in a, the school committee may address a policy level concern that's related to it, but there are some levels of detail that I would say typically would not be something that a school committee member or a school committee would take up. And I don't know, Dorothy, if you have any thoughts on that?
This whole two and a half hours has now gone in one giant circle. We're now back from the beginning where we were at six o'clock.
So Anna, if you have people that are talking to you and saying, I'm not getting answers...
Or, or in some cases, the answer is just so dissatisfactory. They've gotten an answer, but it was, either didn't answer the question, was a placated answer, was a piece of misinformation. Like, right now, I'm dealing with one parent who had one understanding of something and has totally different information that conflicts with our own website. I don't know what to do with that information, because I have a constituent essentially who's, who has, you know, so, so, yeah, so it's partially either no answer, which I think is a volume issue. I, I'm sensitive to the workflow, but it's also, I got an answer, and it's so unsatisfactory to me, I'm still upset about it. And that's probably the harder one to solve.
So if you get someone who is in that situation, particularly if they're not getting an answer, do you pick up the phone and call Mary Beth?
I've been trying not to bother her, because I know that she's busy, and I've been trying to, I mean, this sort of gets back to my issue de zor of the feedback process. So that's kind of where this all started, to be honest, but that's why, that's why I'm asking about it. I mean, if, if she wants me to call her, I could do that, but I feel like she has a lot of things, you know, and this is the circle we're in, so...
Right, because I think it's, it's important, I think, if, if someone is calling you and saying, I'm not getting a response, right? And if you're C, and you're just going to sit on that, then you're going to be frustrated, and they're going to be frustrated. So that, to me, that's a time, busy or not, it would be better for Mary Beth to hear about that and be able to address it with whoever is not addressing the issue.
What I've advised them to do is to email the superintendent and the building principals, and to copy the school committee, so that we're sort of aware of the volume of, of concerns. And I think we can all agree, like, we have been getting emails to this effect, and I mean, every day, there's new emails. So, so kind of like the activity you did with the Post-its, which is such a great design swat, like, that's, you know, standard issue design swat. When you start to see buckets of complaints, right, these all fall into this bucket, time on learning, this all falls into a staffing problem here, this all falls into a Zoom fatigue problem, this all falls into a support problem, right? What I've been doing is triaging these complaints, and it's not one or two, but dozens and dozens, which is why I've been trying to bring it to that next level, because it seems more systemic. So that's why I'm sort of really trying to, because I don't want to overwhelm the system or the building administrators who are trying to make it work, but if, if the responses take it to the building personnel, and then that, we are, I think we're in a circle right now, and I want to try to actually get resolution, because community agitation is just at an all-time high.
Right.
And I think it's at that level, because they don't feel heard, despite all the processes we're trying to do. So that's, that's, that's really the...
So there's going to be a couple, that, I mean, somewhere they have to be heard, and bringing it, David, you're not going to want to hear it, but the school committee can only deal with issues that fall under the purview of the school committee, right? You could, school communication, I think, falls under the purview of the school committee. But if it's an issue of Zoom fatigue, school committee's not going to solve that, right? That's got to be solved somewhere else. It may be part of a bigger issue, I understand, but a lot of times, I'll say, when, when people want to go directly to staff, right, school committee wants to call Vinnie, or call Tom, or, you know, talk to Eric Tracy, rather than, and takes Mary Beth out of the loop, I'll say, she, you hired her to run the district, and if she doesn't know the questions that are being asked and the concerns that are out there, she can't effectively run the district. So there's some incumbency to say, I got to bother her.
I, I hear your point. I, I think I would say that we're all well-aware, and on many of the emails, we're all copied.
Yeah, okay.
And it, I, I hear you. I guess my only question then is if, again, my perspective, okay, my perspective, if I feel as though the district is really in some sort of state of freefall, and it's related to operational issues, staffing issues, enrollment issues, I'm seeing and I'm hearing it, duh, 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 all day long. I'm an elected member of the community to try to help run the district, and ultimately, even though we've hired the superintendent to run the district, I have a really hard time not feeling accountable, and I would question, I would question what you're saying to David, as if we are accountable. Ultimately, I feel like the buck has to stop with us, and, I, I mean, I, I get, I get there's lines, but I feel like we're in that gray area where...
And, and maybe it was a bad example, you know, my response, what I said to David, because all those operational issues rise up to something bigger than an operational issue, right? So need some, just whether it's, there's more resources needed, or whatever, then that, that's a different issue. I think perhaps we'll let Chris weigh in too, would that be okay?
I mean, it's fine by me. Dave, do you want to say something?
Fine by Chris. I think one of you hit the nail on the head. The level of anxiety among the people we're serving, with good reason, is very high. People want and need answers. Unfortunately, sometimes you can't give the answer that they feel they desperately need. An accuracy of response to people's concerns, even if it might be a painful response, it's important that we're giving them the most accurate information that we can possibly give. The number of emails and, and calls and, and Facebook, whatever your Twitter, whatever your communication strategies are, you are being flooded, superintendents are being flooded. And when I hear the capacity issue, I appreciate the unique challenge of that flood right now.
I hear that, I just, I, I, that's why I don't want to overwhelm anyone more, but, you know, I...
Anna, and I, I hear in your comments a real sense of accountability and, and wanting to be sure that you're responsive to the constituents in this district, and I have a lot of respect for that. And I want you to know, know that, that I wish sometimes, not, not sometimes, I wish that we had, could do what everybody in this district wants, that, that there was a solution that we could put out there at this moment, that would meet the needs of all of our families, many of whom I know are struggling with the situation, absolutely. We are working hard with families to try to problem-solve when they come to us. I know of a number of different situations right now, where the, the way instruction is being delivered is not working, and there are teachers and there are principals working with those families, trying to figure it out. We may not get the perfect solution for them, but they're working to make it better. And that is where it is going to happen. I met this morning with, there are Apple team at the elementary level, they're, they're doing a great job. They've surveyed all the parents, what's working well, what's not working well. You know, the first week, just getting everybody used to the system was really challenging, we've already figured out these things. Some, you know, this, this model works for some families, it doesn't work for others, they, they're then thinking about what their options are. So those conversations are happening with families. If we have missed somebody and not gotten them in the loop, then we want to fix that, right? But the only way that that can happen is if they come to us, right? And, and part of what happens for me personally, is in my role, is in trying to manage all the public angst around things that are trying to get solved someplace that they can't be solved, and managing the, the upheaval associated with that, takes us away from the work of trying to solve the problems. And so if we can lessen that kind of public upheaval about, oh my gosh, this is awful, or this is happening, or that's happening, and, you know, one of the things I'll also speak to is that one of the issues that's been out there publicly has been related to confidential, private leave requests of teachers, to which I cannot respond whether the information is accurate or inaccurate, right? And, but we want to solve, we, we are working with our staff to solve those problems, but those problems are not going to be solved at public forum at a school committee meeting. Those problems are going to be solved with the HR company, with, with people internal, and if... and if, with council if necessary. That's where those problems get solved. And I, I feel the same sense of responsibility that you do to make sure that we are getting back to families, that we are, we are responding to their needs, knowing that we may not be able to meet everybody's needs to the extent that we would like to. But we, we, we will work with them to try to figure it out.
Who are these goals for on the entry plan? Are they, are they goals for you or are they goals for the school committee?
They're, they're goals to try to focus the district, right? To focus that, you know, if you go back to that original slide that had the Ruddell ships and the, the crew boat that was heading in a, a specific direction, it's an attempt to try to focus things.
So, but then I have a strong issue with goal number three of professionalism because it's, it's very, very distinctly pointed at the school committee and the school committee only, right? And while we're all here and we've all, you know, openly admitted that, you know, we have work to do to be a more efficient team, we're a self-governing body and, and that's for, you know, us to, to be dealing with. So the, the fact that it's sort of a goal coming from you seems backwards to me. And the fact that nothing else was actually planned here and, and brought up in this section is, is a little disturbing because I think it was very clear throughout the summer, it's still going, that we have a problem with professionalism in that our, our schools and our educational levels seem to be siloed. And there's, you know, so, there needs to be more collaboration throughout the district in that regard as well. I'm actually looking, I've been flipping through the webpage because when you said, mentioned directing people where to go and how, and who to contact, there used to be a page right on the website that actually did that. Because I know Dr. Harvey and I actually built that page right when I was first elected as chair to help guide people on where to go when certain questions arise. I can't seem to find it now.
It is on there, David, because you're absolutely right, it is. The, the issue is that nobody knows it's there, that it's not vetted. It's like a document that sits on a shelf and people aren't aware of it. So what, what I'm suggesting in this goal is to rediscuss this with the whole committee, to say, "Here's what we're saying to people, are the right processes and procedures to solve problems and to get them, get them published." The, the other thing that I think also needs to happen regarding this is a staff handbook, right? Where do staff go to be sure that they're, they know how they go and they solve issues that may come up, right? Those, those two things, I think, will solve a lot of issues around getting A to talk to B, right? That that piece is important. And I, I want to share, David, that under goal three, I, I'm really clear, particularly under action item two, which is all about my role in being sure that agendas are published with the exhibits on a timely manner. That is something that is the responsibility of the superintendent. And the reality is, it has not, it has been last minute trying to get this managed. And I want to make that a real priority for myself, that regardless of everything else that's happening, in order for us to operate at a professional level, you need that in order to be successful. So this is not pointing fingers at any one individual, but as a district, how do we present ourselves in a professional manner so that we instill confidence and support from the community?
So it, it's funny that you actually just mentioned action item number two because I actually disagree with that as well. I actually think that, you know, with the exception of larger ticket items that you know are coming in advance, our first review of, you know, the budget review, or our first glance at an upcoming budget, or things like that, then yes, giving that Friday deadline is nicely of the whole week, weekend ago to look through it for the Wednesday meeting. But the agendas aren't due until Mon, until Monday afternoon. And to actually create your agenda and lock it in three days prior, I think is, could be short-sighted at times because things do come up on those Mondays, you know? So that, that really worries me. I, I think that making sure, there's a difference between adding something in the afternoon on Monday and then adding something the afternoon of Wednesday, two hours before the meeting. You know, when that's been popping up the past few weeks, I've actually questioned, you know, the legality of it and whether or not we're actually dipping into, you know, OML violation territory. Because while, you know, an agenda can be amended, it's usually af, I thought, it was my understanding that it actually has to be amended with, when you're adding completely, it's, that there was a difference between adding an item for an agenda that was already on there and adding a completely new agenda item.
So it does not actually require that you list the items that need to be discussed, but doesn't say the agenda, so you can't amend.
I can't, Dorothy, I can't hear you.
We can't hear you now because of the vacuuming.
So it's not, I mean, it's, you're not in violation of the open meeting law by adding items after the agenda has been posted?
After the agenda's already been printed?
Yep, yep.
You know, but I, again, I think that's sort of, you, you're cutting off your own feet at that point, right? By, by saying that it's going to be done on Friday. And it was always my understanding that, again, it's really nice to have that weekend, but there's also things that when you're closing, closing a quarter or whatnot, that, you know, that information can change Monday or Tuesday. And, you know, at that time, it's, it's fine. It's not, you know, obviously you don't want to make it a habit, but, you know, I, I really think you're hamstringing yourself there. And, you know, that stuck out. You know, stuck out to me when you read it. I mean, I, I love the idea, none of this stuff is new. You know, I, I think that the capacity issue, the capacity issue we discussed when we were discussing the cuts, right? We knew what was going to happen. We knew we probably couldn't even get through this year with the cuts we were making. It was needing to make the cuts to get to, you know, get our budget passed, you know, in town to make sure, to make a number. And we had to do what we had to do just to get to July 1. And then figuring out how we go, you know? So, so that, that's no surprise. You know, updating the strategic plan is something we've been talking about for the past couple of years too. But I think you're right on base with a lot of this stuff, but, you know, and I'd be curious to see what's going to happen over the next few months as you see things, you know, as you get a little bit, we get a little bit more normalcy in our education plan. And you can actually sort of see, you know, my main concerns is where these, these goal four, right? Because this is really hitting the nail on the head in, in, in what we need to do as a district moving forward. And that's something that's becoming, you know, been, becoming more and more clear over the past year or two, you know, as, especially as our costs skyrocket. It, it's, it's sad that that's one of the reasons why we're taking such a hard look at it, but at the same time, it is addressing, pointing us towards this, this big need with our district. So I think we're right on course there. But actually, lastly too, I'm sorry, is the work plan model. Because that, I'm wondering how we've been operating over the past couple of months because that work plan model is really, really similar to what we've been using the past few years, at least the past few years. Like, setting up those long-term calendars. And when I was, you know, chair, meeting weekly with both superintendents, you know, we were looking at what next meeting looks like, what the meeting a month from now looks like, and what the meeting three months now from, looks like. You know, and I just think it's a, a good operating protocol. And just sort of wondering why it's being addressed as, as, as something new. Like I said, I, you know, as far as I know, it's been in place here for at least two and a half years now. And I'm sure that it was in place when I, you know, became chair two and a half years ago.
It's not something new, but it's something that needs to be done. And I think our, whatever protocols or policy say it was supposed to be done in the first meeting in June, but that was not a good time to do it, and we haven't had a good time to do it since. But it is something that needs to be done.
But how have we been operating the past six months or the past five months without this?
In an emergency situation, normally, we wouldn't have even had meetings all summer long. So we were addressing all of the things that came up, the DESC giving us our new guidelines and our new timelines and all of that. And then we did approve a calendar to go through the end of the year so that we could get started on calendarizing these things. But we've also been waiting for the Board of Selectmen to select the date of the town meetings so that then we could overlay the budget stuff. And that only happened a few weeks ago.
Like, two weeks ago.
So when we got that information, then Vinnie started working on the budget calendar so that we could start putting those things onto the work plan. But there's been a lot of other things that have hap, it should have happened in the first meeting in June, but it didn't. So now we have to do it now because now we have the information to do it with.
Yeah, I mean, again, my observation is, you know, walking in, in July 1, there was a transition in the middle of a pretty enormous crisis, both related fiscally, not having a voted budget, significant reductions, 22 people eliminated from this system. And then the COVID management and all summer long, you guys know, you lived it, right? New things coming up, new directions from the Department of Education, new and different thinking as we tried to move through the reopening plans. So the, you know, everybody should pat themselves on the back for surviving the past couple of months. It's been absolutely crazy. People have, you know, everybody has worked really hard, but we need to start moving from a crisis mode to being planful. And this is what I, my attempt here is to start to move out of that crisis situation and to start to be planful and purposeful.
All right. That, that, that makes perfect sense. Thank you for that explanation.
So I guess my question, you just answered it. It's capacity, goal two, action number two. You know, establishing a team of educators to then go to other districts. Given the reality we're in right now, how realistic is that? But I'm going to have faith that you've got that figured out and we'll cross that bridge or we'll start working towards that goal.
Yeah, and what, what I would like to do is that, so if I say to you, this is something that is, is a goal that we're going to be working on, on the work plan, we, I've built in, okay, on July, on Janu, oh, December 16th, we're going to come to you and we're going to show you what we did and what we found out. So there's the, here is the goal that we're working on, and here's how we're going to be accountable to you as a committee to let you know that we did what we, that what we said we were going to do. And yes, we have some thoughts about how that could work. But the idea of here, here's what we, here's what we're telling you, we are doing to address the, the needs of the district. And then we plan out when we are coming back to you to say, "Here's what happened," right? That, that information, I think, Anna, that's one of the things, you know, am I in the loop? Do I actually know what's happening here? So the work plan enables us to take what's here and say, "Okay, here's where it's going to show up for discussion."
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a question, sort of, and I guess I'm just putting in an always and forever plug. I like the idea of looking outside our, outside our district to see what's going on well in other places. But, you know, Peter was sort of hinting at, I mean, we have some amazing teachers here too. So I'm hopeful that as part of the CIA analysis, we'll also take a good look internally because, you know, I don't know that we have to throw the entire baby out with the bathwater. I think we've got some great teachers here. I see the deficiencies. I, I mean, I, I understand the idea of looking outside, but is part of that also going to be getting input from our own current teachers?
Well, that's who would make up the team, right? That's who, it's really critically important that there's teacher voice in terms of the development of curriculum, instruction, assessment. Those are the experts in the district, right?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that meant like our own people too.
What we're trying to do is look at models for how that gets structured in districts. We are in a highly, highly unusual situation in which all of this pretty much got wiped out last year. So it is an opportunity to think deeply about it, to have teachers think about what supports would work well. And sitting with, you know, teachers, administrators, with a facilitator that's knowledgeable about this, go and look at what else is out there. They may come back and say, "You know, we had work, was the best model. Let's put it back." Or they may say, "You know, we saw this other, other way of doing things and we think that this may be more powerful." So if we're going to address this issue, we want to be purposeful and thoughtful about it. And just put back what was without, without some analysis.
So because I hate doing the superintendent evaluation, and I'm always talking about, you know, the goals, is that what this is intended to be? The goals that we would then use for the evaluation?
No, what I, so again, my thinking around this is this, these are the goals that steer the ship, right? Like, we, we just quickly need to get this district focused and moving forward out of crisis situation. What I will do, and some of them would be related to these, is that I would look at these, these goals and some, some other things that are happening in the district and get a goal document to you. Where it is on the current work plan is on November 4th to say, "Here would be my specific goals," and they would be aligned with the Massachusetts evaluation system that require that I share what, what standards these goals are addressing. They're looking at district goals, student, student goals. So they would need to come to in that format, and they might be slightly different than what you see here.
Superintendent, if I'm reading ahead, it looks like you have a separate line item on August, I'm sorry, April 28th. It says, "Banyos Evidence for Evaluation, Then Evaluation After It." Would those be the specific tools of evaluation maybe that you're talking about, Michelle?
I don't have access to this document, and I need a new pair of glasses, and I can't see a thing on that screen. So where are you accessing the document?
Oh, you have it.
She emailed it to us.
Okay.
It was, I can find the timestamp for you if you'd like.
I, yeah, I just opened it.
Oh, sorry. It was emailed to us today as a Sheet's attachment at 3:22 PM. So if you're looking in your inbox, that's where you'll find it.
I don't know if I'll be able to do that because I don't remember my password.
So, but Superintendent, is that, is that the more specific evaluation date?
Yes, so what, what would be happening there is I would come to you and say, "These are the goals that, that I think make sense." You would say, "Either we agree with those or there's something else that we think that you need to be working on." And then at the, as the year comes to an end, and one of the things, I, I just need to check timelines in terms of what's in contracts and that kind of thing. But the basic idea would be is that in one meeting, I would present to you, "Here's the evidence that I have regarding the fact that I've either met the goals or I haven't. Here's the evidence that I, of what I've been working on." You would, you know, listen to that and look at that. And then the following meeting, you would share your evaluation of my performance.
So the only thing I'll note before we vote on it, and this is really more for Chairperson Bailey, the dates that are on that work plan don't align with the potential dates that we were going to vote on. Something to be noted up if we move ahead, like, for example, there is, in April, there is a seventh meeting and a 14th meeting listed, but the work plan you're talking about has a seven and a 28. So I, I hate to be a stickler for details, but if we're going to align them, we should probably make sure our calendar is aligning with those dates.
And I want to reinforce right now, this is a draft, right? I wanted to be sure that this was a document that made sense to you and that what I will do, and I will work with Michelle, the, the Michelles. And. with Michelle, the Michelles, and start to look more, more detailed about what is, what is occurring here and ensuring that the, the lines are, you know, the dates are matching up and getting something that will be more in a usable form that has those Ts crossed and those Is dotted. But I, I put it together just so you had a sense of what it could look like.
Okay. So is that something that we should, I guess this is really for, well, I'll wait till later, that do we need to delay? It sounds like you can conform the goal document to, to meet our meeting schedule. Is that right? I mean, do we?
With the, the dates that are being voted on here?
Because once we vote them, then we've sort of voted them, right? I mean, that's the whole point of establishing a calendar, right, Michelle, Bailey?
Well, the calen-- the calendar is supposed to be set per the bylaws. The work plan should be done in order to provide us direction. So, but you know how in the bylaws, it talks about special meetings and regular meetings? This is a regular meeting. Anything else is a special meeting. It used to be that regular meetings were held on the first and third Thursdays of the month, but then a couple of years ago, the committee changed so that it's this document that makes them the regular meetings.
Okay. I just know with everyone's calendars and, you know, just want to make sure everyone knows when we're supposed to be here. That's all.
Yeah.
These would be the dates that you would be building out your calendar on?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So what I would recommend is that at our next meeting, I bring these goals back, back to you for approval. If you see anything here that you would like adjusted, let me know. But then, then when we're, when we're moving forward to try to, again, shift out of this crisis mode into more of a future focus mode, then I know that I am moving forward with goals that the committee is supportive of.
So there is one other thing on the specific request I have a little bit of a concern about. Do you want me to voice that now or later? Is that all right?
Yep, absolutely.
So item three for a specific request for the school committee, work with the Board of Selectmen in Hamilton and Lenham to provide town cares funds to the school district to offset substantial COVID costs to the district and to free up funding.
Can I ask where that is?
It's on the second page here.
Just on the back page?
On the goals.
It was a different piece that, you know, here, here are some things that would be really helpful in order for us.
I guess my observation slash question is, you know, the part of, I think, the difficulty the district is in has to do with our budget. Part of the difficulty of our budget has to do with our relationship with the towns. And even though we're waiting for Vinnie to give us sort of the Q1 financial analysis, I am a little bit concerned with the presumption that we would necessarily support that. I, I understand the district is in sort of dire finances, but I feel like I would be remiss to not at least speak to the fact that, you know, the towns also made cuts in different places. The town budgets are also hurting. And I think from a taxpayer perspective, this would be a little bit of salt in the wound to the residents of Hamilton and Lenham because the towns also made significant cuts and went without things and are also hurting. So I know that we're the school committee, and I, I understand that, like, I'm, I'm aware of where I'm sitting, but we do operate in the towns of Hamilton and Lenham. And I'm actually kind of concerned about the blowback from that item requesting. And I guess I'll just say personally, I don't actually feel I would go to the Selectmen in Hamilton and ask them for that. I, I think that that would do, I think that would do the relationship a disservice. And I would, I would caution that request will burn more bridges than it will build, in my personal opinion. And I think if I was a taxpayer hearing that, considering the tax increase we just levied upon both communities, and now they're saying, you know, just, it, I don't support that.
Yeah, no, I, I--
Can I talk about that just a little bit?
Sure. And then I, I can give some additional information regarding that.
The CARES Act money has to be spent on specific things, and it has to be spent by December 31st. The towns have repeatedly said there's no way they could spend their entire allocation. So therefore, we can either not spend the money that the federal government has provided, or we could ask them to spend it on some of our expenses. To me, I feel like if the federal government had allocated that money, we should spend it in our community instead of letting it go back.
I fully agree with that. I just want to make sure that the towns really don't have their own purpose for it.
They have repeatedly said that out loud.
And I can share that we've had, Vinnie and I have had a number of meetings with the town managers on a variety of topics. This has been one. They've actually asked us to produce a list of the additional expenses that are COVID-related, which Vinnie provided to them at the last meeting. Obviously, they need to go to the Selectmen to discuss this. But when I think about a community's coming together to solve complex problems, this is certainly one of them. And if we can have the committee also talking with the Board of Selectmen around here are the needs that we have, that, that we have the spending in those really tight areas where that money can be allocated. And that, that as Michelle mentioned, it is, it is likely that for, for the communities, they may not actually be able to spend all the money down due to the constraints of that money. And it's a conversation, right? And if the towns need that money, that's, then certainly that's, that's going to be a different story. But having the, the Boards of Selectmen understand why we need this. I'll give you an example. I was in a conversation regarding this, and I, one of the individuals said, well, you, you folks are in remote and hybrid, so your costs must be going way down, right? Which is, can't be anything further than--
Now we're operating a whole other school.
Right? We're running like three or four different programs with less, less staffing than we had last year, lots of different things that are happening with PPE and tents and everything else. So that, and that was a very genuine, oh, that just seems logical that your expenses will be less. So how do we, again, work together as a community to figure out where, where we might be able to fund some of these extra things that are really critical so that we can deal with some of these immediate issues that are out there related to capacity? And if, and if, if this is in fact where we are, which I, I believe is true, but, you know, again, towns are also managing, as you noted, really challenging budgets as well. So we're not looking to take away something that, oh, now we can't do this for the town because the schools want this. It's that the schools actually have the expenses in the places where we can spend the money.
As long as--
And it's a conversation, right?
As long as, is, I mean, I definitely don't want to leave anything on the table. I fully agree. I just, I'm sensitive to the town budget side of it.
Absolutely. And that's, that's going to be important as we go into the budget season, right? We know that people are, have been supportive of the budget, that they're, that the tax levy here is intense, and that is a real issue here. And we need to be mindful of that. So I would suggest that we look at this as a, a first read, and then I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to finalize. And with your permission, I'll move forward to work with the Michelles and get this draft work plan up to a, a level that actually starts to become usable. And we'll, I'll stop there in terms of this portion of the evening. Again, I'm mindful that we're, we're way over time. Okay. Michelle, do you want to take over in terms of the delegates in the schedule?
Okay. So we are now to selecting the MAS C conference delegate. So that's going to be this year a virtual thing. And there are resolutions that the MAS C has put forth, and it's probably published in that book that I haven't read yet. And so somebody needs, or somebody has the opportunity to attend virtually and vote our support or non-support of those resolutions. So what we're, we need to do by the 16th is let the MAS C know who that is so that they can send you the link and, and the voting credential ways for you to vote on these resolutions.
Do you know the dates of the conference?
It's one day. It's--
The 7th?
7th, I think.
7th of--
Saturday, that-- November 7. Saturday, November 7. Yeah. So, and I don't know, that'll probably take, what, two, two and a half hours, Dorothy? Like--
That would be a long, hell of a Sunday, actually.
Okay. So it's a short thing.
I know last year was around an hour and a half.
Okay. So anybody dying to spend an hour and a half on Zoom on November 7th, on Saturday morning?
I'll do it.
You want to do it?
Yeah.
Anybody else want to do it? Looks like it's going to be David. So Mary Beth has a form, David, that you just, we just need to--
I just gave it to you.
Oh, you gave it to me. I, I now have the form, David, that we need to send in to the MAS C. Yes. Yeah, yeah. So let me find it real quick.
Can I just, for Claire, so there's, so there are going to be a bunch of resolutions that would, are we as a committee going to instruct David?
We'll go through, do the votes, and I'm just the official hand raiser.
Yeah.
Dan, did you receive this in the mail?
It's, it's in there.
It came, it came two weeks ago, maybe.
In the mail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It may be that if Dana and Anna didn't get it, it may be that we don't have their addresses yet.
Did you get that, Anna?
I did not.
Okay. So--
So can Janelle update that?
They need to send Dana and Anna's addresses to MAS C so they start to get all the mailings.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. More mail.
Oh, the MAS C kills an entire forest.
Well, I thought, I get enough email from them, just by--
Yeah. And those are also online, too. So--
Looks long.
Interesting.
No, there's one, two, four--
That looks interesting.
Oh, I thought it was the whole thing.
I'm going to be working on that.
So I'm going to entertain a motion to nominate David Palito, if anybody wants to nominate him.
I move that to nominate David Palito to go to the MAS C conference.
David, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination. We're the Hamilton and Regis School Committee, right?
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote on the nomination of David Palito.
Does that need a second?
No, because it's a nomination he has to accept. That's like the second. Since we are in person, you can just raise your hands if you would like David to be the nominee. That is unanimous with six people voting. Okay. So then we have this upcoming school committee meeting schedule.
Michelle, I'm sorry, it does, on this sheet, it does ask for an alternate.
Yep. So would anybody like to be the alternate?
Do we know what time?
In case David should, I don't know, be hit by a bus, have an internet problem.
I'm going to name Michelle Horgan.
I'll do, I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Michelle Horgan has accepted the nomination. Any discussion on that? Great. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of Michelle Horgan as the alternate. Okay. There's six people for. There's nobody else to vote, so, okay. All right. So we have the school committee meeting schedule, which is in the packet. And that was pretty good because it went about avoiding us having meetings during April break. And this 14th one, we maybe will want to meet on the 28th instead, but--
Of April you're talking about?
Yeah, just because we probably will want to meet right before the, I mean, Vinnie?
So on this calendar, we do have the whole dates--
Yeah.
--budget vote. Those do need to be--
Changed.
--advised a little bit. And just also comment that February 10th meeting, we moved that because of the federal vacation. Right now, we have a tentative vote scheduled for February 3rd. If we pass it that night, we have seven days to advertise for the first public hearing, which would technically be the 11th. So I'm not sure if you guys would entertain a change--
Excuse me.
--that tend to be 11th, it's a Thursday.
When is February break? Again, flip the calendar.
That's the Thursday before. Yeah.
Could we just advertise it before we vote it?
You could maybe do it instantly that night. Technically, we almost have eight, six and a half.
Yeah, but if we, I guess my, so say it again. Why do we have to do it again?
So you have, you have to post it at least seven days prior to the meeting, the public hearing.
Yeah.
So if you pass it on the 3rd--
Yep.
And we've posted the next day, technically that becomes 11.
And do we have to have an example of the budget before the hearing? Is that why we need, can't do it?
You have to vote it a tentative by the 4th--
Gotcha.
So we could do it all that same day. If it is technically seven calendar days, depending on the time, and I'll technically hold seven days.
Can I, can I ask a question about the meetings then in February? Because our bylaws say we're supposed to have two regular meetings a month. So if we have a meeting on the 3rd, and we have a hearing on the 11th theoretically, but then we only have a workshop on the 23rd, we wouldn't have another regular meeting again until March 3rd. So that would be a full month.
We never have just a hearing.
So that would count as both? Okay.
Yeah. A hearing is, is sometimes us sitting here hoping somebody says something in the audience, and then we move on to the meeting.
Things may be different now.
Maybe, maybe. But, I mean, even last year, I don't think we had but maybe five people come to the hearing on the budget. And we had three of them.
So Vinnie, you're proposing meeting on the 3rd, ideally, assume that we vote the budget in draft form, public hearing on February 11th, with the idea that the morning of the 4th, we have to be Johnny on the spot about posting it.
Correct. And I'll have it ready for now, posted as soon as--
And then we have the next week is February break, and then we'd have our workshop on the 23rd. Is that right?
Essentially.
Okay.
Keeping in mind in here that if the Board of Selectmen, or the FinCom, or whatever, wants to meet with us and they're not available on a Wednesday, that we'd have to have a different meeting perhaps.
Well, I mean, my understanding of this document, it's a draft, but we're doing the best we can to make the best schedule we can, and things happen. So we've, that's, that's been all I've known since this started.
Yep.
So--
So the only other kind of gas gap that sort of gives me a little bit of pause is there's no, so when you're saying, Michelle, we might move April 14th to--
28th, maybe.
The 28th, because that spread of meeting, meeting, and then no regular meeting again until May 5th also seems like a big gap to me.
Yeah, I think we should. The only problem is that week you'll have the warrant hearing on the Monday, and then you'll have a meeting on Wednesday. But we probably will need an organizational talking points meeting on the 28th, unless we're ready to do that, you know, three weeks before, two weeks before the town meeting.
So then the month of April would be Wednesday, the 7th, and Wednesday, the 28th for our regular meetings? We had to add in another meeting there on the 14th? Theoretically, we could.
We could if we needed to.
Okay. I like the idea of giving us spaces to grow if we need to.
But we already know we're going to need to meet on the 28th to get ready for the town meeting, so.
Okay.
Well, does it, I mean, I don't know what, I mean, does it make sense to just, we, right now on this draft, we have the 7th and the 4th-- right now on this draft, we have the 7th and the 14th. Does it make sense to just, instead of trying to change one, to just add the 28th? You're saying we all, we already know that's going to be real, right?
We can, we're going to be tired by then.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to be realistic. If you're saying your experience tells you that that's going to need to be a meeting, it seems like it's better to add it now.
There's sometimes a lull.
The 14th, and make that the 28th, to do the two meetings in April.
Well, I think actually Dana's suggesting we simply add a third, since it sounds like we're going to need it anyway.
Sort of indicating that her experience tells her we're going to need a third.
Third, okay.
And, I mean, nothing would be better than to come out of the 14th and say, we're done, we don't need another meeting.
We have nothing to fill a meeting with.
We can't come up with anything to put on the agenda.
So we're going to add one on the 14th, so.
We've canceled meetings before, it was glorious.
So so far the changes are February 10th to 11th, the addition of April 28th, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so the only other thing I'll note, and I will relent in the interest of everyone's sanity, I do object to the length of time between Wednesday, September 30th, and Wednesday, October 21st. That feels like a long time between meetings in this moment, and I do think our policy says we're supposed to have two regular meetings a month, so I'll just have it noted, but I'm not going to make a huge kerfuffle about it. I'm disheartened by that, but I understand, you know, especially in light of the work plan that Mary Beth has put forward and things going on, I just would like to note that that makes me uncomfortable, and I think is a bit of a disservice to the public that is clamoring for information, but I can understand the forces that went to it, so. So based on that, then I think the policy group, if you guys are in agreement, Michelle Horgan and Peter and Superintendent, we could continue to meet on the 14th. Does that feel right to you, instead, to sort of stick with the plan? Does that seem fair to everyone? I'm trying to be reasonable.
Well, we gave you guys more work tonight, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That makes sense to me, Anna, just keep the 14th.
Yeah, especially since we have, you know, this new work item, and I-
I'm looking, I've got negotiations on the 14th, what time, what time are we looking at policy?
I think we set it at 7:00.
We don't have negotiations.
I don't have negotiations on the 14th.
We have not received a request that I'm aware of.
I think we just mapped them on the calendar, but we may not be ready to-
We don't need it. Oh, are you saying you were anticipating that we would receive a request for the union out, from the union already?
It is in my calendar, for whatever reason, October 14th at 7:00 PM.
Are you sure that wasn't policy? Because we definitely put policy in there at 7:00 PM on the 14th.
Well, I'm going to change it.
There you go.
It's a typo.
Until 7:00 PM, correct?
So Peter and Michelle and Superintendent, I'll redo the draft agenda we started for policy and add that to it and make sure, and we also know that Dorothy is definitely available that day because we set it with her in the first place, so. Peter, was there a weapons policy that we needed to add? That keeps coming up.
There is.
Can someone send that to us, like the, the draft of it? Michelle?
There is no draft.
There's no draft.
It's just, I can go back to the agendas that it was on.
We were looking at other districts, right? Yeah, we were looking at other districts' policies for a model.
Okay, why don't I put it on the agenda, and then we can decide if we really have time for it, because I think that would make five pretty big things on the October 14th agenda that could well become a four-hour policy meeting, which might be like the torture, so, okay.
It would be.
It will be.
Not if Peter brings dinner.
All right, thank you, Michelle, for entertaining my objection. Mahala, if you could just know, I'm not, I don't love it, but in the interest of everyone's sanity, I will relent with my request.
Okay, so these would become the regular meetings, and the workshops are still meetings, so. And in the event that, for whatever reason, you know, we finish up the stuff we need for the workshops, we wouldn't have to do those anymore. Do people ready to vote on this?
Can I ask one question, and I don't want to change it?
Yeah, and awesome.
And I apologize if it was discussed while I was out of the room. Just wondering why the workshops are on Tuesdays and not Wednesdays?
I don't know.
All right, I, I'm fine with that answer.
I, I would prefer them to be Wednesday, if we have discretion to make them Wednesdays.
I, just for me, the way my mind works, I like the Wednesdays so I don't accidentally miss it because it's on a Tuesday, except was it, but I don't want to. I want to go home.
Thinking around this, today was a Tuesday, so I made the list of the days, so there was no-
And today was a Tuesday because Dorothy could come on Tuesday, yeah.
Well, and it was not that Dorothy isn't available on Wednesdays, it was just that tomorrow, Wednesday, she had committed to somebody else, so.
As a teacher, I prefer Tuesdays because Wednesday is usually, we don't have students, so I don't have to worry about lesson plan, planning at 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah, I personally-
I don't know, I have any idea what you're talking about there.
I have students every day, so I don't care.
I, I mean, I support, I also have mentally pegged Wednesday as our day. Also, doesn't Stacy, if I'm remembering right, doesn't Stacy have a conflict many days of the week? And I think the workshops especially are best if we can have all of those.
Yeah, if that's the case, then I would say that we would not be able to have one on Wednesday, November the 11th, because it's Veterans Day, and personally, well, I don't know what Veterans Day will look like this year, but a lot of times that's a busy day for me.
Just one more, Mary Beth, maybe this is, I don't know if you know, but the last one, June 16th, is a Wednesday. Is there a reason for that?
That, I wasn't sure really what the history has been here. Do you tend to hold committee meetings after the last day of school? So I wasn't sure, so I said, I'll make it a workshop, and we'll figure out.
We usually end up doing that.
So typically you'll go past the last day, so it would be a committee meeting?
Yeah, we usually have like one or two more in like June, and then we, the next one's like the beginning of August.
Yeah.
So-
Sometimes something in July if we need to.
So I, I kind of feel like if, especially for this workshop work, I feel like all seven of is really important, so I don't know if we need to check with Stacy before finalizing that, or I mean, just-
All right.
I think we could vote on the whole-
We could always adjust.
And then we could change it, those individual, because it's three days we're talking about.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, it's, no, it's more than three, it's one, two, three, that's four.
We've already done one.
Oh, true.
Yeah, that's what I just realized, too.
Do we also need to vote whether we're in person now or Zoom part of this?
Well, that was what I was going to ask next, is do people want to have meetings in person? Do they feel like this was more effective than not in person? Do you want an opportunity to view what it looked like for the public?
No, I, I personally feel much more comfortable on Zoom until the pandemic eases up, but-
But for two reasons I prefer Zoom. One, I, I don't think it makes sense to, to expose us to further risk, but when we're on Zoom, we have a much larger attendance as well than, I have no idea how many people are streaming in, but I think on Zoom, more people attend.
I, I just think that our meetings run long also, and it's a lot easier, like, right now, I'm starving, dying to go home, and normally, you know, I'd be like eating my sandwich like at home.
Well, I'm a big Zoom proponent, but I do like the face-to-face, that we're a little bit, we're humanized again.
Yeah, I, I, I am, I'm very flexible, I would do actually what, I, if anyone wants to be on Zoom, I would respect that, and I think that we should do that. At the same time, is there any way, like, this has been really good for me, like, is there a way to say, like, maybe the workshops could be in person?
Maybe, yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
Because this, for me, like, I feel like, wow, it's so good to see you all.
Well, my, my biggest concern about having no Zoom option, I mean, I totally agree, I was going to say for the workshops, because if the point of the workshop is that the public can view it, we don't have to manage crowd control, as you all saw, I had serious concerns about crowd control, and so if we go away from Zoom and there's no Zoom option for a regular meeting, I don't know how we would prevent 50 people from wanting to be here with us, and I, I would not meet in person with 50 people in this room.
It's childcare. Childcare prevents that. Which is why Zoom has been amazing for really engage in the community, yeah.
So are we ready for a motion with the, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, but Dana, I like your idea of in-person workshop.
I fully intend to put that in the motion.
Pretty compromise.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we go. I move that the Hamilton Regional School Committee approve the school committee meeting schedule as presented in this draft with the following changes. Meeting on Wednesday, February 11th, 2021, instead of February 10th. Adding Wednesday, April 28th as a regular meeting. And further, that these meetings shall happen in, on Zoom, with the exceptions of those meetings designated as workshops.
So a second for that. Second for Dana. Any more discussion?
Just that you said Wednesday, the 11th, and it needs to be Thursday, the 11th.
Yeah, it's Thursday, the 11th.
Oh, shoot.
Sorry.
We're going to call that a Scribner's error, which means that you meant to say Thursday.
I did, in fact.
Okay. Anybody want to discuss anything? Great, we can vote by raising our hands. That is six votes yes, and no other votes. All right, so that puts us to the end. We want to thank David, well, we'll thank, we'll thank you after next week when we tell, or two weeks from now when we do the resolutions, but we want to thank you for being willing to do, take the Saturday to do the conference, so.
My pleasure.
All right, so we are adjourned until 7:00 on Zoom on the 21st. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
At 9:44.
Give us the time, it's just 9:44, okay.
At 9:44.
Is someone going to second that?
Second.
Great, all in favor, you can raise your hands. Look how fast that is. All right, six.
When's the next meeting, did you say?
21st, at 7:00 on Zoom.